Thank you.
Ready?
Yeah.
So myself and Sonya are gonna do a public services department. We join together, and so you're gonna get both of our budget requests together. So we're just gonna kind of swap off and on. Go to the next slide.
Hold on, I still have public services, Rob.
Is it?
Yeah, we're changing it.
We give you this a juice on it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Go for it, Chief.
Yeah.
Awesome, we got the thing up though. Good job.
Thank you.
Perfect. Good job, James.
If they're gonna chew your mouth now.
Well, like what was stated, since you all know, you know, his department and my department, or we work together. So whatever happens in police world affects what the court does. So that's why we're gonna do this emphasis to just public safety. So I'll go ahead and start with my 2021 and 2022 accomplishments. We implemented the adult probation services in 2021, in the summer of 2021. Contracted with the San Francisco Lujia. We also established a partnership with Little Bounce here, which is a 501(c)(1) organization to provide resources for our court defendants. They did set up tables in the lobby for the first time in September, the first court date. And I believe it was a success. Yes, right, yes. And so they have been able to reach out to some of our court dependent and let them know that, hey, there's support coming up. Sometimes they use their paperwork, they lose it. And so Little Bounce here is great, providing those reminders amongst other things like housing or healthcare and things like that. This has been a great partnership. We extended public services hours, bringing more revenue to the city. So we used to do only mornings of Tuesdays and Mondays and Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And now we provide Tuesdays and Wednesdays still, but it's an all-day thing. So we bring in a lot more revenue to the city that way. We implemented the file stiller. It's a file share program together with the help of IT. And this is to provide electronic paperwork to our attorneys. That way we're not having to email back and forth discovering to them to as they heard from court. So that was a great vision as well. I worked together with the administrative officer of the courts to update our much needed, also law table. There was a lot of laws in there that were outdated. They were, we weren't using them anymore, so we worked together and it's been updated. And I thought we had updated law table was provided to the police department so that I can assist them as they're writing citations.
Okay, as far as police side for the 2122 accomplishments, in July of 21, we had a lot of law changes. We successfully transitioned through those new legislative law changes, and it's been an ongoing process. Because there was quite a few, and it was a lot of, put a lot of folks out there. It was different for them to have to follow those new legislative changes. So that transition, we've done that successfully. Multiple position changes, a new officer hiring under retirements. This piece right here, a lot of agencies are looking for officers. And we were very lucky and blessed to have the folks that we got. And we did that through, without adding hiring bonuses. We did that throughout without offering money to people. We got those good officers because of the quality of people that we have. The officers that we have now were probably our best advertised. So just working for a good city and working with a good bunch of people is how we got those, good folks. The addition of bike and vehicle cameras, that's historical for us. Obviously, we haven't had those in the past. So it's huge for us to keep continuing transitioning through that. Ever since we've had those, the benefits have definitely outweighed the negatives. Whether it's through different complaints, whether it's through training opportunities, and just teaching all the new officers that have come on. It's become a great training tool for them to not only experience how they go through the process with their FTOs comments, but then to be able to go back and watch themselves on video and to see what they can do as far as change. So that was there as well. Successfully established the police citizen advisory board. We started that in 21. We've had multiple meetings. Now we're reportedly meetings. There's five citizens on that board. Every time we meet, we have great conversation. We're working on progressing into how we establish bridging more community members with our conversations. So we're establishing, our last meeting was last week, and that was our main topic on that. Coming to an agreement that the young community schools have three school resource officers. We've talked about this in the past in length. That's obviously the benefits of that. That's huge going forward with strength in our relationship with the schools and that trust building with our youth in the year. Exceeding all training requirements from Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission. We're required to be officers 24 hours a year. We've met that, evidence in that.
Okay, goals for our court department, for our upcoming 2022 and 2024. To provide training for court staff and officers for better understanding of our court and police work. And what I meant by that is we work together, right? But many times, our officers, they just know that they write a citation, they file it with the court, and then they'll be addressing it. But I think that it would be great for all of our staff and police officers, including our prosecution, to meet up together and discuss, okay, so any concerns that they may have of what happens to their citations. They need to know, you know, maybe what is judge doing, how is the prosecutor addressing it? It's kind of like the life of a citation from the time they send it to the sector to the court up until the time we close it. So I think that's important. I don't think we've ever done that, so. And it will be another opportunity for them to have the prosecutor in front of them to discuss other concerns, issues, or questions they may have regarding their cases. So that's what that is about. Another goal is to add more jail bits to our current contract with this body trial jail. We are not changing anything on the current contract. It does expire in 2024. But we've had conversations with the tribe, and the contract will not change. We will keep the same jail bits, but we will ask for an increase in budget. That's one of my requests. We'll discuss it right now in a little bit. But for the availability, the ability for us to have that opportunity helps more in this. Another goal is to add more probation services hours to the probation services position right now. And we have to continue and increase recidivism in our court and help with that caseload growth as we're gonna start getting more officers on the road. We're gonna start seeing more citations in our court, so obviously that caseload is gonna grow. And complete implementation of paperless court process. So I did discuss briefly with our public safety committee meeting today that I have started the process of becoming a paperless court. Currently, only municipal court in Thurston County has that already in our area. And so we're kind of following their process with the help of IT. We already have the software laser pitch, which is great because we don't have to spend more money for our software. We just have to work together and create new files and start scanning those files into electronic paper. And then we can get rid of our files, our cabinets. And so that will take some time, but we have started that process, and I can't wait to complete that. Purchase and implement the QA portal for public records requests. This is something that, together with Rob, we have to be discussing in adding, especially for public record requires when it comes to all those case reports, especially now with the camera and videos. This is a very, a way for us to efficiently provide those records to people. And so we're excited for that as well.
Police side, the 2022 for goals. Obviously, adding additional commission personnel, people of the population, housing, and business growth. And again, we're gonna continue with that path of buying quality individuals to fill those positions. Developing a training program to help advance education of the less experienced police officers that we're gonna be getting. And I think we're already seeing that a little bit, just with the folks we've taken at this point. And that training program's gonna be huge going forward to make sure that we continue that training and advance that just to make that less experienced officer get that education that they need. And I would imagine we're also gonna be receiving more legislative changes. So it's gonna be something very important for us to continue to do that. Fill the special unit sergeant position, which will assist the detective duties as well as bring first lines supervision to the specialty division. Our specialty division consists of our detective, crime prevention officer, and school resource officer. Right now, we currently, the assistant chief is, once that position is still, is taking that first line supervision position away due to not having a specialty unit sergeant. And right now, we don't have an assistant chief position, so I'm doing those duties. So I think that it's important as we grow the school resource officer, if we get that detective position, we work on the crime prevention position. It's gonna be important to have that supervisor monitoring them and making sure they have that first ones. The addition of non-lethal options to adhere to new national standards and changes. We've already looked into and purchased the FN303s, which basically is a gas and the back launcher that came after the legislative changes in July on regards to the 50 caliber shotgun, reducing that, taking that off. They changed that since then, but I think this was a more effective tool. We also have other tools out that we're looking at is Bolo wraps, which I think has its purpose in certain situations. And I think another thing I was looking at as far as non-lethal options is how we do our defensive tactics. We're gonna go into the jujitsu mindset. The Gracies have developed a law enforcement format of jujitsu. And there's other agencies throughout the country that have adopted this. And it's reduced officer injuries as well as suspect injuries. So I place that in that less lethal, non-lethal option as well. So I think it's just gonna reduce situations and take care of situations that may advance into something a little more serious. Expand the community resource program. We need to work on community and community resource position we had in the past. And we found it beneficial because it bridges that gap. And as we grow with not only the neighborhoods, but also businesses, having those people in place. Our school resource officers, when they're not in school, they'll play that role for us. But eventually, I would like to get an individual that that's their primary function, is that community resource position. Reduce criminal activity and meet the expectations of our citizens. Basically, want to hold folks accountable for the things that they do. And I think working in conjunction with the courts, I think that's something we do hand in hand with withholding folks accountable. So I think that's obviously an ongoing goal that we'll continue to have.
On this jujitsu, are you kind of like hand-to-hand combat?
Yes, so traditionally.
We all need that training.
What's that?
We should all have that training.
That's true. There's really, if you look into it, if you look at studies, it definitely shows that it's more effective. It's less aggressive, and it's more efficient. And that's how come it reduces injury because of those, those techniques that they use. So I think that it's just gonna create, I think, just more of a form of a less lethal.
Unless someone's coming at you with weather.
Yeah, transition into something else, but yeah. And yeah, and ballistic shields as well, I forgot to make that point, ballistic shields. You know, in the new legislation, they want us to patrol tactics to create time and distance before they would teach for us to go in and handle the situation dynamically and aggressively. We're backing from that technique, and we're going more where we can stand back and with covering distance to have that communication with the individuals we're dealing with so we can have that ability to de-escalate. I think ballistic shield. Service.
No, you're good. All right, so budget request. My two primary request for this new budget, my new budget would be to expand the probation services, obviously, so that way we can continue to increase recidivism. Currently, we have a 28 hours per month contract. So I was requesting hundreds, that we increase it to 160 hours as we're also preparing for city growth and more officers and caseload and stuff. And so the city is proposing that we increase the contract to 40 to 60 hours per month from the current 20 that we currently have for the 2023 budget year. And then the remaining hours in 2024, and caseload supports it. So, you know, starting with 40 to 60 hours and then kind of see how it, how we're doing and see if we need to increase it to like the full-time position for the year 2024. And increase jail budget to allow for additional jail bits. We currently have three jail bits in our contract. And again, this is not changing the contract, it's just keeping it, but we will have that ability to increase or house more.
So on the police side, my budget request for four or five patrol officers to account for the expected growth of the city and to add an additional team member in '24 to the Thurston County Regional SWAT team, bringing our contribution to that team as two members we currently have in line. I think it's important that we add to that team because the training that these folks get while being on the SWAT team is something that they can bring back to us. It helps us on patrol to establish threat assessments on certain calls. It also brings us training to our firearms training, our firearms trainings, and just always stand on the line, shooting guns. We're moving, and it's very dynamic training. And I think the education that these folks get with the SWAT team, they bring that education to us, and it makes us more tactically sound. So I think that that was important. And with our negotiation team members as well, I think it's important for us to spread our, I guess, our footprint in the county with other agencies and sit have it as just another seat at the table with another agency to get us out there. The city is proposing that we have three officers to be hired, two for the budget year 2023, one for the '24 budget year to fulfill the school resource officer's request. And also they're proposing to add that second SWAT team position in the '24 budget.
Excellent question for that one, for the 2024, that's a school resource officer?
Addition? Yeah, the three positions that are being proposed by the city would be, it's reference to that commitment that the schools are providing for us. So that might say they would be providing for us to be part of for those positions.
And that comes out of the school fund and money.
There is a part of the city.
Most of that's paid for by the school, I mean, court officer and lawyers. Now, how much Chief?
So right now, just their salary for the 22 union contract is $74,000 and some change. Obviously, that goes up every year and in every scale.
Not to mention equipment.
Equipment, you've got, you've got, you know, all the benefits. And with an officer, obviously, you can get it, have that equipment, it goes up from there. But for the salary, for the most part.
So in 2024, we plan to have at least three school resource officers?
Correct. By next September, in school year, starting next September, my goal is that.
That's fantastic.
You said it's about, probably somewhere in the ballpark of $1.20, $1.30 for our total cost per officer? After the initial year, it's, I estimated about 119, but I'm not a mathematician. That's what I figured out, something like that.
Pretty accurate. Not very random, no. Listen, I don't need to calculate.
So it's, the school resource, if you're looking at, probably around probably like $50,000 per, that is gonna cost the city. But the city has access to them outside of school. Correct. Yeah, and technically, we do have access, we have access to them during the school year. Yeah, it's significant happens. But like during, during the school year, they may not have the schools. Correct. Unless something crazy happens. Correct.
What are your questions? My question is for you. The community resource officer and then school resource officer, how do those functions differ?
So the school resource officer, main function is to establish that relationship with schools, and their function is in schools. They, they take care of issues in the school. They also teach classes in the schools, hours trainings, different kind of harassment training, things like that. The community resource officer works with the businesses and the neighborhoods and has those interactions and communication and conversations to listen to what they need. And then they bring that back to us, and then we try to just work together and bridge that gap. So they also help code enforcement as well periodically. So there's different, different functions for them. But the schools are, school resource officer's school function and community resource officer basically is.
Thank you for answering that. I do have a follow-up question.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is, is that hiring separate than the three that you asked for? Or will they be taking on both positions?
So until we get established community resource officer, is that what you're talking about for that position?
Yes, are you envisioning a separate hire for the community?
Correct. Down the road, that position would be filled with their primary function being community resource. Right now, I use the school resource officers to do that when they're not in the schools to help out with that program.
Great, and then that is, just to be clear, separate than you're asked for the three resource officers to be hired?
It will be, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, as we discussed in the committee meeting, with those five new officers that you're putting in the quest for, and just so the other council members can know what I recommended to you is trying to reach out and find the grants. Because as I've said before, I believe that if we can get the grants to get their equipment, then for by 2023, if during that timeframe, you get their equipment, as you said, it'd take a year before it could actually all show up, that by 2024, I'm sure that we as a council could find in the budget a way to be able to bring on five new officers with city growth and to prepare for future city growth as well. So please, as I said, if we can do that, I think that'd be a really good idea to help out, that gets prepared.
That's definitely something I'd look into, for sure. Are we talking five officers in addition to the three? So my proposal was five, C's proposing three, which is great, that's awesome. You have questions?
Thank you.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Oh.
Chief Executive.
Chief, Chief Executive.
I'll make this brief, there'll be a few more tonight after me. And the executive department is pretty simple when it comes to that, so.
Are you a bit chilly?
What?
Are you a bit chilly?
I am, yeah, a little bit chilly.
You want my coat? It's a big coat.
Pretty thin. So the executive department right now, obviously, Liz just joined the department, or the city, she's under the executive department. We have IT under the executive department. We have HR under the executive department, and obviously, Joe and I. So that's basically encompasses the executive department right now, until we look at reorganizing a little bit as we go forward. As you know, when Lori left, she was the administrative services director. And so when Lori was here, the IT department was under the administrative services department. But we don't have that position right now. So when Lori left, we, IT went under executive. So it's just a change when Lori left. So we'll go to the first slide. Get through the accomplishments. So I wasn't obviously in this position through all of '21, so I can't take credit for everything that's up here. I'd like to, but I can't. So obviously, COVID was a big thing for the city. And obviously, I was with the city during that timeframe, and it was extremely challenging to navigate and operate through that. But we made, we come out, I think, on the positive side of that. Obviously, the transition to new administration, and what I say with that, our council was predominantly new as well. So it was, in my 25 years with the city, I don't think I've ever seen that much of a transition in administration in a year's time. Obviously, some challenges, some concerns, fears, for lack of better words, that I think we got a great team and great administration right now, great council for it. Obviously, the balanced budget, successful audit for Stephanie over there in the corner. We're accolades for her for keeping this going the right way. Water rights, and put water rights on there, obviously, you know, that goes back 20 plus years for the folks that got us to this point where we got our water rights. That was huge for us. The transportation package with the three roundabouts that will start next year is gonna be a huge deal for our city in improving the traffic flow in and out of town, especially with the slight delay in the bypass or the alternative route. Other three roundabouts are gonna help kind of bridge that gap until we can get that done. Restructuring relocated employees' apartments, obviously, you know, Cody's department is a huge department. He had a huge building down there. Much of that building was unused, it is now used. And so we did that, for HR, Dr. Karen earlier, she submitted some accomplishments, 30. The from HR, I talked to Karen earlier, she submitted some uh accomplishments, thirty-four employees were hired in the last two years. Uh, not new employees, just thirty-four employees total, uh, which is, which is.
Some working in the summer because of retirements.
Yeah, 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 various reasons, but basically thirty-four were were brought on uh to the city, uh, which is a tremendous amount. Work and opportunity and it it just continues, um, even this week, we have several more uh job offers out there, folks that are. Gonna be joining us uh soon, so. Uh, then of course, the communication record position that Lynn is in, uh, starting today, Lynn's first day. So we're really excited about this position, the mayor, I spent a lot of time. Uh, kind of putting this together and and kind of what we hope to get out of it and what we think it could provide to the city. Uh, some great advantages, and so we're super, super excited to have Lynn. Join us and kind of carry that vision forward on what that position could be. Uh, three labor relations contracts, that's, I don't think it's ever been done in one year that we did all three. Uh, within like a what, three, four month window, um, I never want to do it again, but I'm sure we will. But anyway, that was a big deal, and I will just say, just as a some accolades to the council, um. In all the time I've been here, getting the council behind and supporting uh some of the numbers and the and the duck and the and the wording. Uh, was really big for us, and so from a department head standpoint, working with uh councils in the past. It hasn't always been that supportive of of what we wanted to put on the table, and so that's a big accolade to the group that's in here. And then just the uh morale and workplace environment, uh, that was one of, one of the uh, you know, top priorities for Joe. When we, when we came in, we talked well before the year started and we said, we gotta change that culture, we gotta change the culture here. And so hopefully, uh, we've done that, we've continued to to try to do that, and uh, hopefully, it's a, it's a good place to work. And then um exempt employee contracts, that shouldn't be in there, or no, it is, I'm sorry, we're, we're, we're finishing that. Personnel policy revision, our personnel policy really hasn't been updated in like twenty years overall. And so uh, in the next month or so, we'll have a brand new bias personnel policy that will uh be available and guide us and then. Achieve the well-stated status and receive a two percent medical premium discount for uh twenty twenty-one. Um, and that was from Karen as well. Moving on to the, the goals, grow responsibly, staff appropriately, improve every day, customer service. Uh, improve cleanliness and appearance of young, maintain healthy budget, uh, continue to focus on making Young a great place to live and work. Invest in our employees. And that kind of goes with the one below that, the development and implement management training program. Um, and then restructure to improve the efficiencies and accountability, as I said, we're looking at how we're gonna restructure uh our, our whole city as a whole to improve that. Um, but the, but the big one I did for us, um, and it's, you'll hear reiterated a little bit uh more as you go, is this implement management training program. So right now, when we come from the police department, for example, when Rob became a chief, when I became a chief. Uh, the state requires certain classes to be taken, certain certificates have to be obtained within a short time period. Um, in order to maintain that position. Other departments in the, in the city or county, they don't have those requirements for any managers, any supervisors. If they go to training, they can go, they don't have to go. What we want to do is the city has developed this management, this training program for our supervisors that allow everybody to um. Basically get better at what we do, right, to keep perfecting what we do, become better managers, um. Uh, even if you've been a manager for twenty years, you know, you're hiring a different generation today than you did, you know, ten years ago, and so. Uh, the whole goal is here, is if we can invest that uh time in training into our managers, it'll trickle down into our departments, we'll have better departments for it. And so, um, that was, that's, that's our focus for us going into that. And then I, we don't have, I don't have a big budget, um, I had a big budget when I was police chief, uh. Now I don't really have a budget, and so it makes it easy when you're doing budget time. Uh, so basically, if you go to the uh, the next slide, all it is is the, the training one, and then we just threw the reader board up there. Because there was some conversation about the reader board at the old city hall, obviously, it was stagnant for a long time, and we didn't really have anybody that. Can change it, uh, changing it became very difficult because you physically had to go into that building, log into a old computer and get it to change. Uh, and then it just quit working altogether. And for a period of time, I think it had one message on there that was about eight, nine months old, because I think it was advertising a football game. But football season had been over by about six months, and so I think we just shut it off because we couldn't get it fixed, and so. With the new communications position, we thought it, uh, and the new technology that allows you to remotely uh program messages and program messages ahead of time. Um, and again, using Lynn's position, we thought it could be beneficial to advertise what the city's doing, where the meetings are being held and just, you know, ongoing. You know, not, not something that is stagnant, but that's to keep it very current, so. We wanted to just throw that allocation in there and, and uh, you know, as far as where it goes or what it looks like at the end of the day, you know, we don't have that. I have a specific, but we just wanted to try to pencil something in, in case council decided that that was something you wanted to support and add into the budget. So any questions for me? Yes.
Do we do the dog park in twenty-one or was that before?
Dog park's not.
It's not.
It'll be. Yes.
Have a question, and I probably shouldn't know this, but I know. How many current city employees do we have?
Sixty-eight.
Wait, we just talked about this story, I think it's, it's gonna be closer to seventy, seventy-one, um, after everyone's on board.
You don't know what I'm on.
I talked to Karen earlier today on that, so. But I, I didn't know you were gonna ask that.
That's a great, great question, though. Way to give me a question that I really can't answer.
But it was sixty-eight.
Any other questions for me before we move to the next department? Some of your questions may be answers to go through the other departments as well, so. If not, come back to me, I'll answer. Yes, you know what, Jason's here and I, I, it was my fault, I went to Jason late and I said, Jason, give me some accomplishments and. And he was busy today and I couldn't get him on here, so Jason's here and I just asked if he could give a couple of updates.
So we had some pretty major accomplishments this year, uh, we were able to finish a fiber optics uh connection. Jason Hardy, IT manager for the city of Young, good evening, council, um, and mayor. Um, I just wanted to update you on a few things we did in the last couple of years, few of them many, I should say, but uh. The big one was we were able to finish a fiber optics connection that's over two miles in between public safety building and public works. It'll save the city over nine hundred dollars a month, and it should last for twenty years for growth. So it was a big accomplishment for us, we've been working on that for almost ten years, trying to get permits and approvals and. A pathway to get this cable all the way there, it was a great, huge accomplishment. Um, another really big accomplishment, thinking back on Rob, is Aaron, our uh network administrator, awesome, awesome dude. Was worked really hard with Rob to get that pushed out, lots of hard work and this. Getting one of the best six body camp security footage companies in the entire nation to come out here, so that was an awesome one. Um, lots of digital form work, so we've been uh going on with Sonya, transforming the city from paper to digital. That's been something we've been working on years and we're really getting to the point where there's very few amounts of paper. That we have to push for the city now, it's almost all digital, people can do it from anywhere they need to. And the last one is that we're working on a new security onion server which just finished up deploying. It gives us full visibility of our network to ensure that there's no Russians or Chinese coming in and trying to hack us, and it'll warn us if they detect anything. And uh, it allows us to segment our networks that even if a piece of it gets somehow compromised, they only get the small little piece instead of the whole pie. And it will really, really increase the security of our city going forward and, you know, more relevant today than ever with the things going on around the world, so. Um, those are our big accomplishments in twenty-one, twenty-two, so how fast are you gonna catch me? Well, and that's another reason why security is so important, because we wouldn't want someone to be able to put some other random message or other type of message on, something like that. And that is something that would be vulnerable to that if we didn't have this type of security in place, so. It's a, it's a big deal, because of public, and people are driving by it, and it would be really unfortunate if that happened. And then uh, just real quickly to add on to uh our, our goals moving forward in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Um, we're gonna be there supporting our core, our police and all of our other departments as they grow. We uh absorb a lot of that growth in terms of management and overhead. Um, every single new staff member is more in management overhead for us to take over and make sure that their accounts are working, make sure their computers are working, it's just cost and. Equipment and stuff, just keep growing over time, and uh, the last piece was for looking at the budgets and stuff going forward. Uh, as far as I know, as of right now, we don't have any real big asks in the next biennium, we're gonna try our best to uh, basically get our budget. Our E and R fund that is supplied money through uh all the different departments to get that really just trim light and this. You know, as efficient as possible, because as everyone knows, a lot of people look at IT and they say, where does that money go? And we want to be able to say, this is exactly where it's going and why it's going. That's it, guys, any questions?
All right, so in the finance department. So the finance department did combine customer service and utility billings, and our, the financial services department or department six. And we hired an accounting assistant to focus on accounts payable and front counter um coverage, so. Mainly doing accounts payable, but she does cover the front counter when our front counter staff has vacation or sick or things like that. Um, we did receive a clean audit report for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. When I came here about a year and a half ago, this city was behind um on their audit three years. Nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, we are now caught up on the financial side. Um, the auditors just started the accountability side for twenty twenty-one. Um, and that's only gonna be about two weeks, so we are caught up with the state pretty much on our audits, which is a big thing. Uh, we've been working really hard to clean up our general ledger accounts, ensuring that all of our transactions are properly coded. In accordance with state guidelines, the Washington State Auditor's Office, they tell us how we're going to code everything, they give us a chart of accounts. Um, and we've just been going through and making sure everything is coded correctly, making sure that, um. You know, if transaction is miscoded, we put it where it's supposed to go, um, and that just helps us run reports to tell. You know, everybody, all of our stakeholders, this is how we're spending our money and what's going to, so. I'm really proud of my staff for um jumping on board and really working to get that all cleaned up. Um, with Jason's help, um, our V and O tax process, we have electronic payment options now, our forms are all.
All right, thanks, sorry for the interruption, for those that were watching live, there's probably about four hundred or so, sorry about that, folks. This, well, we did take a ten-minute intermission when we had technical difficulties, um, nothing was discussed, we will start the meeting back up and. Right now, all I can do is.
All right, um, let's see, so, um. So our V and O taxes since twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, we've increased our collection by thirty-five percent. Um, I picked off a six-year finance bootcamp that is just a. A basic um training series on the structure of the city, how we do our accounting, how we do our expenditure reporting. Revenue reporting, um, I did the budget session with council, if you remember, I did that a while back. And so, um, that's ongoing, and then I did have staff that can continue the education trains um during this biennium. Next slide, please. So twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, we are just about to issue a new updated purchasing policy. And that is in accordance with all the guidelines and RCWs with um purchasing and bidding and small works and that sort of thing. We're going to update our travel policy, we're going to issue a capital and debt sensitive asset policy. And then we're working on our collections process for both utility and V and L. Um, we are gonna start researching financial software and set up some demos to see, um. So we belong to, the software we have is called Bias, it belongs to a company called Springbrough, and their next. Step up, we're gonna watch some demos on that, um, the problem with our current bias software is that it doesn't. The modules don't necessarily talk very well between modules, so there's oftentimes there's hiccups like between permitting. And cash receiving or accounts payable, and so we're looking for something that will satisfy all of our needs and make for a smoother transition across all the different modules. And we are going to issue a banking services RFP. Uh, we are working on cross-training our staff so that we have people cross-trained in all functions of finance. Um, especially payroll, financial reporting and budget preparation, and then we'll continue to do our finance bootcamp sessions in twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. I'm kind of doing the first round with city hall staff and then I'll kind of open it up to other departments and council members are always welcome to attend those sessions. Um, so I have two requests in twenty-three and twenty-four, the first one is that I wanted to, um. Add a V and O tax analyst position that focuses on business license and V and O tax. Um, we are probably gonna peak one million in V and O tax revenue this year. And um, it will more than certainly cover the um staff increase of about eight thousand dollars. We would, we have an accounting assistant position, we would leave that vacant if we created the V and O tax analyst position. Um, we've developed in-house knowledge on, on the tax laws and we want to retain the talent that we have and that we've developed. And so my thought is to uh move the person that's currently doing V and O taxes to move them into that tax analyst position. We'd be an accounting assistant position vacant, so I'm not adding an FTE, I'm just. Doing a promotion of it, yes.
What's the difference then?
About eight thousand dollars.
No, I mean, not money-wise, but what they're actually doing between.
So the accounting assistant that's currently doing V and O, she's also doing accounts payable. Um, and some other functions, and so her, her main job now would be just to focus on V and O. And developing that program even further for us, um, and then my part-time person that I hired this year would take over all of the accounts payable. And then I did request fifty thousand dollars, it's an approximate number, um, if you are familiar with city hall, there's two private offices. One is for the city administrator and one is for human resources. Um, I would personally like to have a private office and I know a city clerk would also. Um, we have had some estimates, I think it'd be about fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's really difficult for me, I manage a staff of five, to have a confidential conversation with anybody in my office. I basically have to go outside or go into the conference room if it's not busy, and the same with Kathy. Um, it's just really difficult to be a director and be in charge of staff and not have space to have those confidential conversations. Not only with staff, but with the management team and other people, so that is my two requests for twenty-three and twenty-four. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Two presentations, we'll start the public services department budget presentation. Okay, all right, um, so we, I try to focus high level on the accomplishments, not because. We have any more accomplishments in the department, but we're very task-oriented and specific things oriented, so when something gets constructed and built, that's something we accomplish, so. I try to cover just kind of some of the basic ones, um, so Cochran Park Phase One upgrade, the whole front half of Cochran Park was rebuilt in twenty twenty-one. Um, and then the main, the coolest thing is, it's aesthetic, right, but the main purpose of that was to allow increased flows to Cochran Park. And the reason we want to increase flows is because we're making more sewer water, reclaim water now, that we need to treat and send somewhere. So instead of sending it to the river, there'd be no benefit from it, now our Cochran Park can take those new upgrades. Um, the outdoor fitness court, uh, right over here was something we did along with new sidewalks installed in city park, along with the community garden that was installed. I didn't want to take too credit for the community garden because it was a group of individuals outside of the city that kind of organized that, we just gave them the place to do it, so. Kudos go to them for that, but we did build the sidewalks to go to that park and we were able to build a fitness court and kind of almost complete city parks, that was a pretty good accomplishment for us. Um, one of the biggest ones that just happened is we are now hauling and pumping our own sewage and was this waste activated sludge. So before, we were paying uh two companies, Blowhocks and Drain Pro's to do that, um, it's cost us on average five hundred to a thousand dollars every trip. Now we do it and it costs us around five hundred dollars a month in fuel. Now we do it and it costs us around five hundred dollars a month in fuel and that's it, which is huge. And that was partially um to council adding that collections crew member, so we have a collection guy who's just out there pumping tanks all the time. He's had a really good interaction, I think one of the benefits that I didn't foresee, which has been huge, is that he's having interactions with public on a daily basis from our sewer department. They can ask questions, get information from him, and it's just been a really good benefit, now people are learning more about our sewer system and how it works, which has been awesome. So that was just a huge bonus. Um as uh Administrator Stansel said, we hadn't watched this constructed for planning the building, so if you haven't been to, I think all of you have at some point. Um upstairs, we had a old storage closet where it was all of the files for the city. We moved those out and built five offices and then one more office down the hall to house our entire planning and building part. We were able to move them out of City Hall, three other spaces in City Hall, and kind of get all of the public services under one roof, which has been really helpful. Um Mazzen Avenue extension is finished and open, so if you haven't been on there, Mazzen Avenue, that was an eight-year, it sounds crazy, eight-year project because we had to obtain it right away. Um that, it's surprising how long roads take because you have to go through all these hoops. So as you'll see when we come to our other goals, I'll tell you kind of what else we're doing. But Mazzen Avenue is finished, great road, it's been beneficial to me specifically, wasn't even planned that way.
That's what I'm going to do.
Yeah, I had planned it before I even got here, that's how good it was, but it's pretty nice. It's um, these kind of things are what's helpful in lowering our in, our inside traffic. The Yell traffic itself is putting these like side roads in to allow public people in Yell to go through. Um po- parking lots at Public Works and City Park were paved. So one of the big things I really, really wanted to stress is that if we're gonna force people to do something, we shouldn't just tell them to do it, we should also do it ourselves. And one of those was get ourselves up to code. Um two of the things that were lacking was Public Works had a gravel parking lot coming in, if you have, if you remember that from a couple of years ago. And the C Park had a gravel parking lot. The target tells someone, hey, you need to pay your lot, they go, why is my pay? Even though we're existing non-conforming use didn't sit well with me, and I know it probably didn't sit well with you guys. So it was great that our team was able to go out there and get paid, you guys allocated the money for that, so huge thing to be against. Um there's Community Garden, I mentioned already, new asset management software. One of the big things coming in um was kind of tracking our assets, tracking what we're doing and the work we're doing. Um getting a new asset management software with the help of IT and kind of vetting it. We started Do Solutions, now Brightly, it's, it's the same software, just changed its name because they were getting feedback from dude, people didn't like that phrase for some reason. Um so there are now brightly software and that tracks all of our systems. So whenever any developer comes into town, they wanna know like the water lines are, sewer line, step tanks, we can pull up on this asset management software. We can send them feedback on last time the step tank was pumped, what pipes go next to them, when those pipes were installed, how big they were. And it's just an amazing tracking tool that my whole team uses, the water guys especially, so. Um we obtained over four million grant funding, so right now, um our team mostly fighting the building. And Pat Hughes, our project manager, have been utilizing this grant funding, so the HCP have that conservation plan, RCO grant for the trail. On Mazzen Avenue was almost completely paid for in grant money, the dog park that we're gonna be building, we paid for in grant money. Um it, it's just, it's crazy how much grant money brought in, this is money that taxpayers in Yell haven't had to spend on these projects, but they definitely benefit the city of Yell. So good, poor thinking on council to accept these grants and then our um team that we have there is held of words to administer them. And then the other one, Commissioner Stansel mentioned, is obtained water rights in twenty year process. Um this, you know, we were obviously here at the finish line, but it was a lot of work that came in before us that got these here. We just kind of pushed it over the edge, right? They hand us with the ton at the finish line where you ran across, it's like, yeah, we did it. Um but it was everyone else that put in the work that got us here, so just really good kudos to all them, but it was just a long process and now you've seen our growth roll up. One thing I do wanna mention that kind of goes with those water rights is that um we're in a meeting with other cities in the area about how many single-family homes they have built in twenty twenty two. And Kirkland, if you know Kirkland, Washington, had seventy-two single-family homes, we have three hundred and twelve. So you can see the difference in just our development versus other areas that are bigger than us and why everything we're doing is so important now. Because we are shaping the future of Yell and you guys at the council that's there doing it, so it's good job on you guys in the water experience there. Um goals for twenty three, twenty four. As you know, we start construction of the new WRA um in December and the idea will be that in twenty twenty four, that should be completed. It should be a twenty-four month project and it will be complete, that allows to um handle our own septic. Right now, we haul our septic to another place, say, well, exactly, it's left, we do it, but we have to take it somewhere if you can't process it on site. We'll be able to process it on site and get it to stuff here. It'll also allow us for future growth with twenty forty-five and beyond. We can just continue adding descent membranes and bio dryers and this plant can run for the next forty, fifty years. Um so that's really exciting. Um upgrade the state of City Park, so one big thing that has always been brought up is, you know, people having to bring stages for events at the park. So we're excited to be able to, you know, kind of get that going and upgrade that stage and a public services committee and many other people are working on just the rest of the, like, where we do the pavilions, what's going on with that. So stay tuned for pavilion information. Um development process, so there's some things we wanna do, we'll probably institute some of these this year, but um the biggest thing is going through our development process and seeing ways we can improve it, refine it. Um one thing we'll start doing, and it'll probably start in November of this year, is a what we call development hour or developer hour, where anyone can come in to planning the building wall and ask any question they want. So any potential developer can come in, ask questions free of charge, get some information. Um and then that should give people an idea, a lot of people just don't know what to do, right? Like, how do I send this, how do I start this process? And it's hard sometimes to Google it or whatever search engine is being. Um so this way will get someone a person to talk to to get that information, so we're excited about that. Yeah, what goes along directly with that is updating our design guidelines, our UDC and comp plans. So UDC is Unified Development Code and our comp plan is Comprehensive Plan. So these two big things, the comprehensive plan has to be updated every year, so required by law, but it makes sense to do our unified development code at the same time. So going through our code with a fine-toothed comb, making sure that everything makes sense in there, that stuff is still legit, that we don't have, you know, horse hitching posts required at every bar. Um you know, we don't have, you know, gutters, stuff like that, that just doesn't make sense, get it out of there, get the code completely updated. Our staff does a really good job of doing patchwork fixes, but we're putting, you know, lipstick on paint right now. We need to move forward and just update the code fresh, you know, get our Maserati or whatever car you like to test out or whatever like that. Um so we're excited about that. Um the next thing is we have to start completing the final upgrades of Cochran Park. So we did that front half, we're gonna do the back half next, so to increase the capacity of the rest of the park. Um a couple of things we're gonna do while we do that, we're gonna build a gazebo out there for a wedding venue, one of the big, um Cochran Park, if you just watched Homecoming. Um everyone goes to Cochran Park to take pictures, do anything, so putting a gazebo out there for weddings and picture taking, along with upgrading the fountain to be, I call it the Yell Magio. Um so it's, it'd be surprisingly cheap to put a couple of cool looking fountains in there. So we're gonna have a new two fountains in there that'll have light displays and color programming. Um Lynn will be in charge of what those are, so stay tuned for her and what her ideas are.
Are those fountains gonna be purple water?
Are they a what?
Purple water?
Yes, they'll be reclaim water, so, yeah, it's gonna be exciting all around.
Just so people know.
Yeah, it will be reclaim water, don't go swimming in the fountains. Um you shouldn't swim in a fountain anyway, so we're excited for those upgrades. But more importantly, those upgrades will allow us to increase capacity to two hundred fifty thousand gallons um per day to that park, which right now, we're at fifty thousand gallons a day. So huge, huge upgrades. Um start and complete construction of a new southeast reservoir, so if you know out by Walmart Boulevard, um if you live out there, the pressure gets kind of low. It's this area of the city that has a lower water pressure, it's the very end of the system, so we're building a new reservoir out there. Um this council uh allowed us to kind of start that design work, we had a property purchase and that should start construction next year and finish in late twenty three, twenty four. Well, for, for its fire flow and pressure out there, which will be really huge. Um start and complete construction of activated alleyway and one-way streets. So one of the big things um we wanna do is kind of create this better downtown walking atmosphere. So a public services committee along with uh parts advisory committee and some other groups are working on this activated alleyway plan. Uh we just got some kind of base design like stuff back that the public services committee will see this month. Um and that'll create the walking path here and some one-way streets that'll allow better flow of traffic. And during events, we can shut them down, do food truck events or have a carnival or whatever, it'll be really awesome. Um start and complete construction of Trail and Resqualling, so we, as you know, the city applied for grant funding for the RCO. We were ranked fourth, so we will get funding for that, that allows us to build the bridge and build a little stubout all the way into Pierce County. So we'll be at a point where then we'll have to work with Pierce County and them aligning their trail to ours. So that, I think the biggest benefit to that, if you know what the STP is, um is that the bikes will no longer be on the road, they'll be on the trail the entire way through Yell. So you won't have to ever see bikes on the road again if we get this done in terms of STP. And that's really safe for them, awesome for us, and then if you want to, it's a really cool walking trail, we'll have a cool viewpoint at the end, right over in the Squally River. Um and you can sit there, take pictures, whatever, it'll be great.
Can we make a motion of that now?
Yes. Hey, that's hard, yeah, we're already working on it, you're golden. Um and then the other one that, you know, re- realliterating to what every other department has said is maintain responsible growth. We, um our department is kind of the foreshadow, we have to plan for things accordingly, especially with the planning side of things. You have to do things in a way that allows a city to grow but grows responsibly. And you know, we always hear the one thing about traffic, about water prices, all these things, so that's, we have to continue to manage that. So we don't get into a situation in, you know, five, ten years where someone's paying for our mistakes now. So we plan that, so in five to ten years, they're not paying for our mistakes, they're getting rewarded for our mistakes, you can even, you know, lower the rates out there, we're excited about that. Um twenty three, twenty four budget request, so you, on your budget request, you're gonna see a couple of things. So we have four new employees requested, um two streets employees, we've talked about this quite a few times. We currently have no streets people, we have one guy who does streets, he does uh the mechanical work, he also does our right-of-way inspections and our stormwater inspections. So we have one guy that does all that, obviously he can't maintain the streets, so adding two streets employees would be really useful. Um the other ones in the specter were required by law, now that we've pressed it ten thousand people to provide a stormwater inspector that comply with an NPS permit. Um that's discharge permit, that um level two, um we have to have that person on staff. Uh and then the other one's a city engineer, so every city in the entire United States of America is required to have some kind of PE on staff. PE is a professional engineer, um we don't have any person on staff that is required to be PE. Thankfully, um Pat Hughes, our project manager, has a PE, which has been very beneficial, but he's not required to have one. So if he left us and we had to hire someone else, we might have difficulty finding someone with PE. So having a city engineer actually supposed to have a PE would be very helpful and then we can hire that person and fall. If we don't have that, we have to announce someone on a container like a lawyer, which is very, very expensive. Um the other budget request is a UDC comp plan update, you know, required by law, we put money in there for that update. I fully think that we'll be able to get grant funding, since it's required, planning, you have to do, a lot of times there's grant funding to fund that. So I'm hoping this doesn't cause us to do anything, there might be a small match associated with it, as you can see there, but we should be well be under what is required to update the comp plan. And then the one-way couple stage, um those are the other two big things we're asking for, we have money in our own streets budget to do the one-way couple. The idea is we're gonna look for grant funding, ideally if we can get it, then we can save that money and put it towards a different street. We're also working on some other road projects, but we're not pressing funding because we're gonna go full grant funding on those, um Roten Roaden. If you know Roten Roaden going out to the new dog park, now to the connection where the bypass will be slash ultimate route. Um we wanna upgrade that road before the bypass gets built, so we're planning to grant funding to do the design work for that. Uh it's Mackenzie and Washington, the two right here, so this one here and this one here. Yeah, so those are the initial, and it's our down to our quarter vision plan to do that. It makes sense to do it now with all the events happening and then also turning that alleyway behind City Hall into an activated alleyway. Active alleyway is walking, so like if you go to cities where they have like feast throw tables now, they have like people walking, lights hanging over, it's totally just for walking, so it'll be pedestrian movement only.
Sure.
So, and then it'll increase, the cool news about the turning these into one-ways, you increase the parking exponentially because now you can turn a whole lane into angle parking. And then you can have another lane of parallel parking for food trucks and whatnot. And so there'll be a lot of upgrades to like the light pole system to allow for two twenty plugins for food trucks, just a lot of forward thinking. Public services committee will be seeing the, it's not like some base designs on that, I got them back yesterday, so we'll be seeing some stats on that this month. Okay. Now, like you're passing, yes, uh come from across, or sorry. My bad, I'm looking across, I was.
Okay, direct, uh one of the things I've seen there, and I'm sure it's already been paid for and all, I'm just curious on for the next two years, the veteran memorial.
Yes, so.
What is the, is, I, I, I mean, the plans are out there, we heard that it's going to be moved, that it's gonna stay. What's going on with that?
Yeah, so we're not asking for any funding for the veteran memorial, there's a lot of grant funding out there, so I'm not putting a budget request in for that. Because I think we can pay for it completely out of our, out of grant funding. There's so much funding for that, so that's why I saw in my budget request, but yes, you are right, the plan has been to find a new location that can better serve um the veteran community. Not only as a memorial, maybe also as some kind of service out as well, so we're still working out King's Nest, that's, we're still working, morning comes soon. Yes.
What money is required to make a road a one-way?
So.
Then the sign that says we're this way.
Yeah, so you're on the same boat I was, and I first started like, why would we need money? Um so if you know these two roads, they don't have sidewalks all the way down. They don't have parallel parking all the way down, um there's not streetlights all the way down. So that, the, the road itself is good, you don't have to do anything to the road, maybe do an overlay of the road. But you have to add sidewalks, buy right-of-way over here, add sidewalks, put sidewalks in across. So it's just like mostly sidewalks, parallel parking, um putting some paint up, putting some small signs up, putting some streetlights up with the ability to plug into, so we can do some of that. That's, that's where the most of the money's going to, I totally agree, you guys said the same thing, like, oh my god, you have to put a sidewalk, stop driving in that direction. Maybe have a cop sit out there for a while, hey, come around, so, yeah, so that's the money to pay the police off, just stand on there, tell them to stop driving, yeah.
Where does our septic go, they truck out of here?
So, yeah, so ours, so we have two things, we have waste activated sludge and septic. Waste activated sludge goes to Shelton, so they have a facility in Shelton processes the waste activated sludge. Waste activated sludge is the end product after everything's treated, that's what's left over, the gum that we can't do anything with. We'll be able to let the WRS, so we can biodry that and then fertilizer, great news. Um the septic, so we go to a septic tank, we pump it out, um just like a, you know, your normal septic, your septic tank. We pump it out, we drive that to bio recycling in Shalhallas. So right down the streets of nearest place we have that we can pump, so Shalhallas and Shalhallas, so. We pump it, we go down there and they treat it, once we have our reception station online, we'll treat it ourselves.
How much will we, uh, I mean, I know it's gonna save us a bunch, start doing our own stuff, right?
Oh, it's, so, so far, here's crazy, we spent five hundred, roughly thousand last, every year in septic solids handling for having someone else do it. Um this year alone, we bought the truck with part of that money and we still haven't spent that buying the truck. So we bought a brand new truck, which was two hundred fifty thou, I don't remember what the price was, we bought a brand new truck. I imagine next year, we'll be looking at somewhere in the fifty thousand range to do all that, we're thinking five hundred thousand. It is bonkers, and once our system's online, it's just gonna become, will become a profit, we'll actually make money to even sell the ability to dump septic here to other companies. Yeah, I mean, you're, you're talking about a total spin around, it's great. Um civilian heart.
So when, when we move it to the membrane plant, will we still need the trucks to pump and will that just stay in Yell then?
Yeah, exactly, so what will happen is we got the truck already, so we can pump our own tanks and everything and just go to our client and process it. So need quick trips, we won't even have to drive out of the city anymore.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Uh with your comment Doug, that we will be able to charge other companies to dump, are we talking about like Blowhawk and all those that they have to blow out, Lake Lawrence, Clearwood? They don't have to go more, uh fifty more miles, they just stop right here, empty their tanks and move on.
Boom, and we charge them, uh, we charge them whatever the going rate is for it, maybe, you know, whatever, well, council wants to come to decision what that is, and then dump here and we charge them.
Water kind of, for pet hairs.
Yeah, it'll, yeah, exactly, it'll be, it's amazing because they, they save so much money on transportation costs and fuel, they can just dump here and go back out to Lake Lawrence.
If nobody wants to buy that stuff, what do we do with it?
What's the, are you talking about the?
The residue sludge stuff that we're selling.
Yeah, so um the, you're talking about bio, the biosolids. Yeah, so biosolids, um the plan initially is to give it away for free, it doesn't cost us anything, oh, it costs us money to make it, but giving it away for free and using our own parks. So we'll save money, we spent about roughly twenty to thirty thousand in fertilizer per city. We'll use that money for our own parks initially, or that, that biosol for our own parks, but then we'll give it to the public for free, local Yell residents. And then based on the need, we can sell, a lot of other cities we've talked to, they just give it away, um but if they're.
If nobody wants it, then what do you do with it?
Uh then you can literally do whatever, at that point, if we can use it ourselves, we have enough need for it to use all our salt, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Terry, Tacoma does it. And there's not a worry about lack of demand.
Okay.
Yeah, the biggest users that we see, so the other places we talked to are like grass places, like grow grass. Um you know, uh I think it's Hunter, Hunter Gardens. Yeah, and they, they literally go to the one down here over in Olympia that grows like grass, they drive to uh.
It's basically the best fertilizer you can.
Yeah, it makes grass grow like crazy, and if people are worried about the other aspects, you know, grass, it's just grass, so they make grass grow like crazy, they use it and just keep recycling. So we will have, there are definitely people to use it, come from us.
And it's just because uh earlier this year, you talked about uh future developments will no longer be doing the septic, septic system. When we happen to get the device that's put in there uh for all within the whole city, will that uh, will we no longer need the truck and that uh to go out and empty tanks?
So when we get to the point, say, we're, I think we turned everything over in thirty years to grinder pumps. Um there'll still be a need for city facilities to have a pump truck, and it's always useful to have a pump truck in case something goes down and we have to take our septic or something somewhere else. Um so there will always be use for a pump truck, we're talking probably, I would imagine, thirty to thirty-five years before we have, everybody converted to a different system as access.
I just was curious on.
Yeah, and by then the, yeah, the truck will probably be done and, but then by then it'll be floating and stuff around, train teleporting. It'll be, the future is now, I'm hallucinating, just. Any other questions about my presentation before we move on to the next topic of?
Okay, Julie.
Okay.
No, it's fine, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, so I was, I was elected to do the post-fee adjustments. Um, so you guys are gonna beat me up, but I'm gonna be talking about several different departments here. And what the fee adjustments are being, in, uh, for the people at home, you guys will have it in front of you, but people at home will see it on the screen. Thank you, so what you're seeing, we're gonna do a resolution that will put every fee into one resolution. The, the one trouble we have as a city, or at least I have, is when we go back and try to find where a fee came from. Looking back and you find something from two thousand fifteen, you find something from next time, now you have to make sure you have the most recent, recent resolution or ordinance that created that fee. So we're gonna create, the, we're gonna do a fee resolution that's gonna put all the fees in one system, while doing that, we want to adjust some of our fees. Some of our fees haven't been touched in twenty-plus years, so you'll see that on there, we'll go down these each one by one, thank goodness they're here. So if there's a specific question about A B that pertains to a department, I'll let you ask that question. I'll try to address it, if I can, and one of the department heads will be able to talk to you about it. Um, so first up is, uh, Y M C, the V and O, up from thirty to twenty. We already charged thirty dollars, just in the code, it says twenty, so this is bringing the code in line with what we actually charge. So this is, it's a fee change.
It's a NSF fee.
Yeah, okay.
From twenty to thirty.
Yes. You gotta beat that instead of that. Yeah, so this one, this is just a fee, we already charged it, we're just, we're officially going to charge it now.
That's not, the NSF is there at the bottom.
There's another NSF fee that's different.
So the thing we're not charging, the dollars we pay for, so we could just be in our code, they were like charging us twenty. So, and then as, and then there's the NSF fee that pays for this. And I can check balances for somebody's pretty hard payment balance.
But that's, yeah.
There's two, yeah, there's two, yeah. One is for like if you pay for something else versus this, yeah, okay. Um, if you have a question about any one, we'll stop and do, talk about it. A home occupation permit, we're lowering the fee to fifty dollars, um, with, so it is at one fifty right now. The main reason we're dropping it down to fifty is staff time, rough, you know, staff has to confirm that the home occupation makes sense where it is. It's within the zone, and they have to check the code regulation, if it's excessive waste, what it does, and then they compare it with the business license that was submitted, and then make sure those line up. So we're dropping it from one fifty to fifty, because staff time taking doesn't take enough to warrant, I think, a hundred fifty dollars, we dropped that one down to fifty. Um, new account setup, this is for water utility accounts. So right now, we charge nothing for someone to set up a new account, yeah, it takes staff time, it takes energy to do that. So this is recouping some of that staff time with that new account setup. Um, I have never found this, well, at least I haven't, I have found a city that doesn't charge a new account fee when you set up a new account. Um, maybe you know of one, so this is just kinda bringing this in line with other people and getting to that staff time to set up a new account.
Wait, this is for utilities?
Utilities, this new account setup fee is new utility, new account.
What if you're setting up for a new person?
What do you mean?
On your, like, say rental property that goes from person to person, is that a new account every time?
Yes, yes.
It is?
It's a account set up in the new person.
In the new person's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, tamper fee, so right now, tamper, this is, it's all our wa. Our, our water systems, when somebody will, um, not pay their bill, or some other reason, they don't have a backflow assembly, or they have a leak and they have a cellophane. We close their water system, we turn off the water to their house, or their business, or whatever it is. Um, we go back out the next day to make sure there's still water, if they turn it back on themselves, we put a lock on it. If that, then sometimes they'll even cut the lock and turn it back on. So this, right now, we only charge sixty bucks, if the staff time, the amount, the lock costs to getting it back out there to doing this thing is significant to us. And it's having our guys go back out there on a daily to check it, we wanted to raise the tamper fee up to prevent people, or to discourage people from tampering with locked water systems, for whatever reason.
So is that only applied to when it, when it's locked?
Yes, this tamper fee only applies when someone with it's locked and they cut the lock.
Okay.
They have to physically cut the lock to do that, if they turn the water back on themselves, we don't, we should go back out, shut it off and lock. So. Good, okay, um, late fee, right now, we don't charge anything for late fees. Um, we, it has been, it takes work to kind of re-attribute these accounts, to reach out to these people, to call them. To, you know, a lot of people just don't even care if they pay late, because there's no penalty involved in it, until the water gets shut off. So instituting a five-water late fee up from the zero that it currently is, that's for utility customers to pay late fees. We can talk about any of these, you don't have to, yeah, any of these, these are all up for talking and debating, so. And these are set and set, so if you have questions, stop me. Okay. Okay. Um, plumbing permits, so we have two plumbing, the one without commercial is obviously residential. So right now, our plumbing permits are at twenty bucks, um, so when you're installing and typing new systems, our guys have to come out and physically check it. The, the reason why it's twenty is because it was under their old salary, salary's having creased by now. It costs us more than twenty dollars to send a guy out there to check your plumbing for an hour. So we're raising that price up to forty for residential, commercial takes a lot longer a lot of times, so we're raising that up from twenty to sixty.
When was that changed, Cody?
Uh, the last time, this was changed in two thousand fifteen. So it wasn't changed, it was just kept the same as when it was in two thousand and five, so this will be the first increase in twenty seventeen years.
When you're saying plumbing permit, is then somebody is having a bathroom redesigned, or is it the fact that a house is being built and you're checking?
Most of the time, it's the second one, so when you're building something new and you're putting in the plumbing system, you have to pipe our plumbing permit to that plumbing system.
Yeah, one way through.
The same thing applies from the chemical permit, it's the same exact scenario, twenty to forty, twenty to sixty, because same amount of time in there, so that's, these two are all in there.
Is there a reason there's difference for commercial and, um?
Commercial is almost, almost always takes.
Well, I need plumbing permit, for the plumbing permit.
Yeah, same thing, it often takes more time, there's not a distinguish, distinguishing from anything, so like a giant warehouse. You know, if Costco comes in, they pop their plumbing permit, they're gonna pay sixty dollars. If a small office building, normally you don't get a single office building, but like a strip mall, they apply our plumbing permit, it's sixty bucks, same all around. Yeah, we have to review the plans, we have to look at it, inspect it, make sure it's good, and then move it, okay. Um, can I say one way, air handlers over ten thousand cubic feet per minute, this is probably means nothing to you, but six fifteen. So air change units, like big exhaust fans on warehouses that pump the air in and out, it's just moving it up forty-five cents to kind of make it, give a number and kind of calculate for more time to be done. Um, one thing you'll see on here, it's not an actual fee increase, but we have a lot of reviews that are done outside the city. Where we have to have like our fire, some of our fire inspections, have we done our sprinkler systems, um, we don't currently charge for the fees that. We're paying these consultants for all of them, some of them we do, but not all, so we wanna have consultant pass to all of them, so it just covers us. So say that our civil review engineer left us, and now we have a consultant doing that work. We can't charge someone anything besides the twenty dollars we've already paid, have been done, but we can't charge them the consultant cost. So we just wanna add consultant cost to all their review fees, so we have that option if we need it. It's not actually increasing the fees, it's just adding that, so if we have a consultant, do it, they pay, instead of taxpayers paying for a new development in time. Um, zoning verification letter, right now, we don't have a separate line for this, it's, it's a new fee, but we already charged a hundred and twenty-five for it. We just need to create a line saying zoning verification letter. We're getting a lot more of these because of this result, it's a letter that approves the zoning you're in. So if you're like R six, and you're like, I wanna make sure that the zoning is correct, I wanna make sure that I can't upgrade, that's what you're asking for. We already charged for it, we just didn't have a line for this to say. It is one twenty-five, we currently charge. Um, state environmental, environmental policy, or C P A, is, uh, something that we have to go through through the state. Um, it costs us more money to send it to the state than we're charging, so we upped it to four hundred to one fifty. Most cities around us are in the six hundred to a thousand dollar range. So we have to, it's funny, we have to, our people have to do, submit it to the state, get approval from the state to come back.
So what does that usually involve then?
When more than a thousand cubic yards of dirt are moved at projects.
I remember spitting.
Yeah, so when, the state requires us to submit an environmental report, and so we're just trying to capture that, I hope. Um, petition annex, this is the big one, and I want, and I know there can be some asked and asked laws. So when someone's coming to the city, um, we currently charge three hundred and fifty to circulate a petition, and then once they have it, all the staff work goes into cleaning it, we charge nine hundred. We're asking to bump it to two thousand, let me explain why. One is, we are by far the lowest, the nearest city that is as close to us as Tamar at a hundred and twenty-eight hundred. And every other city, Olympia, Lacey, is way higher. We're gonna get a lot of annexations, it takes a lot of time, it's a time-consuming process, it takes hours and hours and hours to do, and then we also have to submit it to the county. We have to correspond with the county and pay the county for that same reviews. So there's a lot of processes goes into this, and we are, well, I mean, literally losing money every time we do an annexation for nine hundred. So just bring in two thousand and kind of line it up, still a little over ones.
You mentioned the bigger cities, what about some of the smaller cities like Rainier, Tonino?
So, uh, Tonino is roughly about fifteen hundred, I think it was maybe like that, fourteen fifty, fifteen hundred, um, Rainier, I didn't check Rainier's annexation policy.
Thank you.
Um, our impact fees, we talked about these a little bit, oh, yeah.
Tonino, what's our budget size?
No, we're much larger.
It's three thousand, two thousand, yeah, so we're five times the size.
What? At two thousand, is that about what your estimating the cost is when you're running it?
I think we're a little low on that, but I think we can, we can do that because of how much road we have, and how much we're getting in. I think we're a little low, I think we're more than twenty-two to twenty-four, about twenty-four hundred dollar range, but. I think, I think I, as a public services director who sees my staff time, I think we can manage some of that and bring it down.
So all the ones we just annexed are that were on the books, would, is, is that the type of thing you're talking about?
Yes, they've already raised these two, they've already made this fee and the other fee, so they, they don't have to, it would be a future annexations to come. The ones that we just did are still under that.
So I just call the city and say, hey, I wanna annex my land, and then the U G A, this, this is what it would cost?
No, you, you call the city and go, hey, I'm interested in managing my land, and I do a petition, you wanna circulate a petition first, that's three fifty to circulate a petition. Because we have to do a public hearing, all of that for years, this, this also covers the hearing costs, because annotation has to go for two hearings. So this covers our hearing examiner cost, all of that is why. Um, our impact fees, we talked briefly about this last year, if you remember. Um, one thing we don't do that I have, every other city does, is charge a parking back fee, so when new development comes to town. They pay into the parks, is what every other city does, we don't do that, so when a new development comes to town, you have a four hundred homes built. Yeah, they build a small pocket park for them, but they don't put any money towards the parks that we have currently, or new parks we're gonna build. So they're putting demand on our parks and using our parks, but they're not paying for that usage. So any new parks we build are coming out of our current development, our current people, taxpayers in the city, so this would help fund new park construction. So park impact fees are very specific about what they can be used for, when these park impact fees are assessed on new developments, so a new house coming in, or a new apartment coming in. We would use this money to build a new park according to our park's plan to accommodate that growth and give it to people more public space. Yes, come on us.
Uh, in reference to the single-family, multifamily, mobile home, single-family, if somebody's, if the developer's coming in, they're gonna build. One hundred single-family homes, it's fifteen, fifteen, forty-six per home?
No, yeah, fifteen, fifteen, forty-six per home, so a hundred homes, you just do that over times by a hundred. So.
So is that a one-time, right, yeah?
One-time when you build, when you sell your house, doesn't matter, it doesn't, that doesn't change, it's just when you build, so, just like a system development charge, but for parks. One thing we, the good news is, we have a lot of reap money right now, so we're able to do park improvements. But these park improvements, we couldn't fund without something like this, or a new park, we couldn't build a new dog park without something like this to grant. So this gives us the ability to start planning and building new parks.
Well, you get more people in the community, the use, the usage is increased.
Yeah.
You've gotten to manage something.
Exactly, you're hunting, and that, this money is very specific, it can only be used for billing new parks, or maintaining something like. Upgrading, constructing, fixing something that the park didn't have.
But isn't that new property tax really going into parks that are for parks as well?
Reap money does, yeah, so pro, the new property tax money, which you see years down the line, as people move in and the property value goes up, goes into the general fund. Reap money, um, like when someone sells a house, we get some of that, that's go to the building fund, which also builds the parks, very small amount of that.
So again, oh, the, the park, that's for the developer though, right?
That's for a brand developer, yeah, someone coming down, but I'm building a new house right here, yeah.
Yes, but at the same time, that's increasing the price of a house by fifteen hundred.
Price will pass it on.
There's, and I've heard arguments of, oh, well, they don't always, whatever fee we put on developer, will directly increase the cost of whatever they built. And anyone that ever says otherwise, they're lying to themselves.
Why they all different, why not this is same across the board?
Just because we don't charge the same development charges across the board, so we try to keep it like, uh, multifamily is normally point seven five, or single-family. Um, mobile homes is something that we just wanted to add a section for, we don't really have people that are, we wanted to add a section to kind of show their reflection. Because not each one is gonna put us the same demand on house, right, a multifamily apartment is per dwelling unit apartment, right? So if they have a forty-first apartment, and this is times forty, um, but it's, a normal apartment has less people in than a single-family. That's just, you know, the math.
So to James's point, are, are these fees gonna be also for like the habitat, for humanity houses that go up too?
Everyone that builds a house will be in there, we have, first, uh, affordable housing, we have waiver forms for different fees that they can get off. But they're saying, some things they have to pay for, so there could be a waiver fee associated with this development charge, if they're low for housing. Yes.
I see the park impact fee, what about fees for some of the other infrastructure within the city that they also put a. Imp, that they impact, such as our roads, our, uh, water reclamation facility, variety of other things.
Yeah, the only fees you're seeing are ones we're changing, so there are system development charges like we're talking about, keeping those the same or not, okay, I can maybe need adjustments in those. Um, so the parking community center, I have been reviewed on here, so we just got a new communications recreation coordinator if you didn't know. And so I want her to have some time to review and make sure that things make sense to her, um, we have something proposed by our previous one. Um, I want her to get a grip on that before we propose this, so we should have these to you at, not your next council meeting, but the council meeting at the end of the month, what these fees will be for the parking community center. Um, the biggest thing right now, the public services committee kind of saw a little bit of this, we talked about a park fee, we don't charge anything for any events. And I know we talked about this, Councilor Blair as well, people can come in, they can have an event, a for-profit event, make a bunch of money, and they don't pay anything for the park, they don't. Service the park, they don't have to volunteer, they don't even have to have volunteers, and our staff has to be there to do that, so just trying to recruit some of that money somehow. Um, obviously, there'll be exceptions for nonprofits, for community events, stuff like that.
Just to push back on that.
Yes.
I know the, I know the events that I've sold at, I've paid quite a bit of money to the city, so. Give one way or the other.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, so, yes, and one other thing we are trying to do is track all that, you know, tax-wise, to make sure that business license city, because people can just come in. Leave and never say anything again. Um, sign permit is a proposal, just from the time it takes to do signs, this is like your big, big, you know, cutoff. Signs that have lifeline or anything from twenty to one twenty-five, this hasn't been changed since two thousand and five. Um, so just capturing staff time reviewing of the plans, going out to the site to inspect the sign.
Okay, so that's not for the eight-frame signs, that's something put out?
No, eight-frame signs you can throw, just don't put them in a right-of-way, there's none of, no one in here is gonna do that. So one thing, if you talk to anyone as a business owner, if you put a sign in the sidewalk, we're gonna come by and scoop it up, because what'll happen is a wheelchair will come by and not be able to get by your side. So make sure your signs are not in the right-of-way, just, yeah, put it right next to it, not put it in the middle of the sidewalk, we just think of like six today that were, right in the dead center of the sidewalk, I was like, come on.
I know with the sign code currently, it says, if, unless it's changed, you can't have it at all.
Aprons?
Yeah.
You're allowed to have apron signs, so yeah, um, it's for events, special sales, there's a couple of, I can't remember the exact code, I don't want to quote it off my head, but there is exceptions to that.
Can we, and this is probably another discussion, change it up to allow them?
Yeah.
But make, make it where it says, you can't be blocking the damn sidewalk.
Yes, a hundred percent, so the U D, when we do the U D C comp plan, that'll be one of the things that we'll tackle is every piece of that development code, the signs, the.
When we were talking about the sign code, like, obviously, I don't want massive billboards that are thousands of lumens bright. And you can't see nothing, you can walk in views, but outside of that, I think we do loosen it up.
Yeah, I, I mean, that, and that's totally, whatever council does, we'll do that, um, public services committee will be the main driver of that. But we'll still bring it to you guys several times in development order to go through them next year, and you'll get to make those decisions, like, hey, I don't want that to be that strict, let's loosen that up, let's go crazy here, let's tighten that up, whatever. So then we do our full code update of next two years, you guys will be the driver of whatever you wanna see.
Are we requiring a sign permit for an eight-frame sign?
No, you don't have to do a sign permit for that eight-frame sign.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking about, these are the neon cutout lifeline signs.
Big permit.
Yeah, um, we're at, uh, reinspection fee, we talked about this, right now, we don't charge anything for a reinspection fee. So this would only be for a third inspection, so a third beyond, a lot of times, businesses will come out, because they know that I have to pay, they go, hey, I think I'm done, you come out and you go, hey, you're not done, you gotta do these things, you go, thanks. They try to fix it, we come back, hey, you, our guys go out three, four, five, six times, and they have to keep reinspecting, and then we're not charging them anything for that. And so it's wasting staff time, and they have used it because they know we're not charging them, putting a little chunk off, so they have to pay for it, but we're kind of driving to be a little more honest.
Be based on project value, is that that can be higher?
Yes, it can be higher, so, um, example, like a giant apartment comes in, they have a huge, huge, very huge step tanks, and they set them. And our guy has to go out and like physically get down there, check the, all the frames, takes him an hour and a half to do it, they fail, and they go, hey, next day they call them again, say, come back out again, and it just keeps happening, so.
Hey, Cody, with that reinspection fee, sometimes, um, sometimes there's not a, really a knowledge of what there is that needs to be accomplished. And so a lot of times, when working with the city, I, I think there's, there's a little frustration that people have with, uh, not knowing what the expectations are. And I'm, I'm sure you're doing a better job of that now, um, but I think that's one of those. Um, but I think that's one of those things where when people have to call back, because they're just like, I don't know what these guys want. And then a lot of times, as long as there's a clear communication with the city, communicating to people that. Hey, this is what we need done, I'm cool with it, but I, 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 I'm, sometimes just a little irritated with that one, but I get it.
Yeah, and this, and this would be for a third and beyond.
Right.
So the first two are on us. Uh, we'll, we'll hook you up two times, and then after that. Now, I do understand what you're saying, is there has been confusion, um. There have been both sides, right? There have been confusion where people are trying to take advantage, go, oh, I'm sorry, I said it, didn't realize I had to tell, call you. It's like. Done the twenty products in the city, come on, every time you call us, call us. So that, yeah, I agree with you on both points. You have a question about reinspection fees? Okay, um, copy tape fee, you're onto the, the police department slash pu, uh, public safety department. So copy tape fee, twenty dollars. Want to say anything about something?
So this is for, uh, so currently, all of our court hearings are all via Zoom, right? So on the internet, uh, in YouTube. But once in a while, we can get that one person that is just not comfortable with the internet or whatnot, and so they still refer a court, proceed and report it on a CD or a DVD. And so that's where this, uh, fee would apply, where we can. Uh, trans, uh, transfer that recording for them to a CD. Would be a.
I don't think.
Yeah, that's, how long does that happen?
Not at all.
So. It's a courtesy, really, right?
No. If you want a copy of it. It's our obligation to provide them a copy of it.
That's what I mean, is it?
It definitely doesn't cost twenty dollars for a play CD and to hit transfer. So.
It used to happen, um, these requests would come in, uh, more often when we were not all virtual and stuff, uh, and it was mainly covered like the cost of. The DVD CDs and without time to download it and stuff, but. Again, with our current process, um. I, but it's, it's always been there, it just hasn't, uh, you know, been, been on the best solution.
This is the via just.
So.
Um, so here's a check return again, same process. If there's a check that bounces to the court system, the bank charges thirty dollars, thirty bucks a hundred yuan charge. Um, credit card, you guys, I wrote credit care, credit card, uh, debit transaction, so this is, you know, you have a fee that when you do a transaction, all business owners know this. And if they set, they set that fee. So we just follow whether that fee is.
If we're paying any more than three and a half percent, when you change the company, we're. Three and a half percent's the higher.
Yeah.
That's using square. So as a city, I would assume we're using a more bigger commercial company for their card processing, which should be significantly less.
Um, so this fee is not being paid by the city, it's, it's being, uh, they get charged on the.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Oh.
Is that for the court? That's for the court, yes, that's for.
I was just saying, I, in consideration of the people paying with the, the debit card or whatever. If whoever we're using is more than three and a half percent, we need to look for someone else.
We can explore that.
Cause three, like it's three, three and a half percent is about what I pay using square.
We'll look in.
Square PayPal, all of those, they're on the high. Because you're low, low transaction, uh, frequency. So they, they charge a little more. Like, if you're a city or whoever, and you're processing cards on a regular, there should be deals where that processing percentage is a lot.
And some of these fees, and you, go ahead.
And, and thank you, sir, for, uh. Reminding me about this, but this is also, so this is with N Court, N Court is integrated also with O Court, which is the software that we use currently on the pipeline for our forms. And so it's part of it as well, and covers some of those costs as well. So, um, and I know it looks very high right now, well, it looks high in the percentage, but. Most of our people are paying twenty-five dollars at a time, and the cost is like, I don't know, is very minimal. Uh, because it is based on the amount of the payment. Uh, many times, uh, Donnie and I are very good about, when somebody wants to pay two hundred dollars, fine. By debit or credit card, we try to let them, and give them even more time to say, hey, do you want to come back? And maybe just bring us cash or a check, kind of avoid those fees. Uh, most of the time, they just wanna go and deal with it, and they just want to pay. And those are the ones that are paying the highest.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, but no, I mean, I, I'm, I'm good.
Um, tow hearing fee, this is, I just talked to somebody about this. So when we tow a vehicle, they can have, they can request a hearing, if the police tow a vehicle, they request a hearing, that's the cost to kind of get that hearing going, seventy-three dollars. Um, we already do charge for this, it's just less than spread.
Right, yes, it's a fine fee pretty much to request that, um, hearing, if they want to dispute the validity of the tow.
Question, if they win that hearing, is that refunded to them?
There is a waiver that they can request, and then they, um.
I mean, be, beyond a way, like, beyond a financial issue waiver, but if they do a tow hearing, and they win, and it turns out their vehicle was towed, wrongfully towed. Do we return that seventy-three dollar fee?
No, because that is a court filing fee, has nothing to do with the tow itself, so that's separate.
I understand that, um. The perspective of the public is that their tax dollars are already paid for the courts. Now, we all know it's a little bit different, but. Like me, if I ha, if I got my, if my car was towed. I went and I know that shouldn't have been towed, something wrong happened. I go pay the seventy-three dollars, go through court, and it ends up coming out that it's true, your car should not have been towed. We should refund that seventy-three dollars back to that person.
I mean, it's something that I can definitely look into, but I don't believe it's a refundability, and not just our courts, not like our court, it's just in general state law. But, um, I can definitely.
I'm sure there's no law saying that you have to, but I, I just think we should.
We can.
If someone's wrongfully towed, and they win that case, I think that we should give them the feedback.
That's reasonable, I think we can look into that as well.
Okay, we have, uh, two, a civil appeal fee and a criminal fee, two thirty and two hundred. These already exist, they're just bringing them up to what the finding costs are or anything within ours. Um, passport, this is a fee set by state, we just want to adjust it to what the current fee is, or let it flow with whatever the state fees and federal fees are required for this. Uh, warrant squash fee, this is something cool I learned about. Um, so if someone comes in, they have a warrant, they can pay extra money to get that warrant. Squash, or squash, is like, um, thirty-five the first time, seventy there, and that lets gives it more time to figure out what they need to do with that actual case versus having a warrant out for the rest of that time.
Quick question. I have these two. Uh, so when I was younger, I got tickets all the time, I never paid them, that's what that's about, right? Eventually, you don't pay your tickets, you get a, that's when you get, you basically a bench warrant out?
No, you get a bench warrant out when you failed to appear on a criminal citation. Uh. You can eventually.
Oh, yeah, but I drove with suspended license for years, I've never paid the tickets, that's why I got one.
So that's different, because if you have, say, a speeding ticket, you didn't pay it, then criminal licensing has the right to stay your license, you can pull over, and then that's fine.
Yeah.
So then, you failed to appear your.
Oh, I have, I have no problem talking about my past, I was an idiot once.
No, no.
But what this is, is, so when someone's in that situation, they can come into the court, pay the thirty-five dollars to, to squash the warrant. And it gives them time to figure out what they're gonna do with the other stuff.
So. Yeah, so currently, um. The current process is if you failed to appear your court hearing, we should, we should re-warrant, and it stays there until you either get booked. Uh, in jail, or you move here, um, in court. But the current process is. They have submitted a written request to Judge Meyer, stating why they missed court, and then at that time, then we, uh, provide them with a new court date. But the warrant does not go away. The warrant stays.
Yeah.
Until you appear in court, because we want to make sure they appear.
So.
So this fee is gonna allow them to get rid of the warrant immediately. They can just come to the counter, they're not gonna get arrested, they'll pay the thirty-five dollars if it's their first time. Uh, we will remove the warrant and give them a notice, uh, to appear. Um. But again, the warrant goes away at that time, and then they can.
That's right.
They can do the second time that it happens, on the same. The second time, it will go up to seventy dollars. And then after that, we will want to pay those warrant fees at the counter, and they have to either pay cash bail for the actual, uh. Amounts of the warrant, or they can just go put themselves in jail. The state does allow us to charge up to a hundred dollars. And so Judge Meyer wants to do, uh, these sort of arrangements, and he does propose.
Make your check available to the city beyond me.
Thirty-five dollars. I'd love to ask someone in the meantime.
This is the, the last one, is kind of, uh, works with our body, the new body cam system we have. So one thing, um, that happens is people are gonna request video for body cams, or whatever happened. The, we have to go through, the staff has to go through, react the video, take it back, have a cam be in there, and it takes time, we don't charge for that, so there could be frivolous people just like, hey, well, body cam, put your seventy dollars away. So keeping me, keeping people honest and requesting them the actual want, um, and that's based on, you can see the R C Ws here that allows to do this, and the idea would be sixty-eight cents per minute, the body cam footage. So, and this is just to prevent frivolous people from coming in going, give me forty hours of Officer Bob's, you know, wherever he did, and it's like, oh, we gotta go through all that, so this prevents that from happening. This is taking up a lot of staff time too, by the way, um, to react, as a meeting and issue that's, that's necessary on these small body cams, yeah, so that's one of the big reasons.
Why would we be redacted?
The children faces, right?
We have multiple different fees that they're required to adapt. You can have juvenile spaces on there, in case. So we gotta go through the software individually, block out faces, individuals, or juveniles, so it takes software time. So now that staff member is there, through that whole time, trying to redact. I'm just trying, I, I didn't, I don't know the full process of that, or why? So basically, you'd have to, you have to have someone sit down, go through the entire video, and bore those things out.
Frame by frame.
Okay.
But it takes time, so that it could be something else, so people don't just do it to make our staff out of that stuff.
Just a comment, I understand in general what you're talking about, staff time, we're talking about staff time all night long here, and yeah, long in duration, absolutely. But I'm still stuck on this whole market, on the new account setup. When you go and open your utilities, most people do it online, and if not, they walk in and they're told, because I did this myself, oh, just use the little machine right there, if you need help, let me know. So if you're a utility employee, and someone comes to do their utilities, I mean, that is what their job is to do. So to me, that's not staff time, it's not a lengthy thing. So I just want to make that comment. If it's a huge thing, sure, but staff time within your. Within your job shouldn't be charged for.
Joseph? I, I'm trying to gather from everyone so we can adjust this for our resolution, Joseph?
I was thinking, uh.
I was remembering, excuse me.
Yeah, no, I, I kind of agree with that as well. And that is part of your job, um, you know, first time is free. Then, after that, you just pay your bills, right?
Cause I think beyond that, if they don't pay their bill.
Yes.
Director, guys, real fast, and then we'll go.
So it goes beyond, um, when you come in to set up an account, when you prepare or fill it out online or in person. Then we have to do a service order, which then goes over to public works. We have to sign a meter, and the guys have to go out and read the meter to get that. Your first meter reading, right? And then they go back, enter that into the system, that goes back to finance. Instead of the account in our utility billing system. So it's not just, it's not just the customer filling out that form, it was what we do with that information to get that actual account set.
So they read a meter for the sewer? For water, for water?
Yeah. So it's a common one. And it's, you know, it's, it's just something that, uh, others would charge, we can't charge it, um, and it's really council discretion.
Okay, thank you.
Governor. I was gonna say, I, I agree with, uh, the new account fee setup, because of just what she described. It's not just putting your name, address, and boom, you have an account. There's, somebody's gotta go out, and the reason why they read the meters is so that you have a fresh start, not what the last person left, that there may have been a leak in the house, somebody left something on. And now your first water bill is a thousand dollars, because it was placed, sat empty for a month. Uh, so you know, there, there's people involved with that. These are, it's a one-time fee. Please, it's not hurting anybody, and this is pretty low, twenty dollars to set up your water account. I remember it was fifty bucks for me. And I'll be honest, every time I deployed, if I completely forgot to notify the city to shut my water off. And I'm sitting in the middle of my rack around Afghanistan, my bills aren't catching up with me, and so they're shutting my water off, I come back, I'm paying fifty bucks. And, you know, there was no waiver or anything else like that. They go, oh, we're sorry, should have told you. So twenty dollars to start an account is not that bad.
I don't think.
Um, I think it's, I think it's. Other utilities charge it, so, and I agree with you.
I would like the sentiment, just because some, everyone knows someone else is doing.
But, but see, it's, it's the.
They're, they're going out and reading meters no matter what. And that's, that's our job.
No, they're not, they're not doing the drive-by reading of your monthly meter reading. If on the fifteenth of the month, you're going, you're setting up your account, they've got to drive out to your property at that time, look at it.
It takes five minutes to drive anywhere this time.
Yeah.
So I'm, I, I see the council pretty split on this, three and three, it looks like. Um, I know this isn't a tiebreaker vote or anything, but I'm kind of leaning. No, it's not a vote, it's not a vote, but, um, whether we put it on, I think we're gonna have some more discussion on this, I'm gonna thumb hands on this one. Um, I'm kind of leaning towards, um, not charging this, just because I think it's part of, you know, when you set up a bit, you know, set up a new account. I, I think that's part of the, I, I, I get the arguments, I, I, I don't want to go back, I, I get it. Um, so we'll discuss this more, and we'll bring it back. Let's look at some other, um, other issues that the council wants to look at. Is there any other ones that you disagree with?
The other thing is, like what I was talking about with the, uh, the tow one. That same thing will apply with the other appeals.
Please scroll up, please.
If you have a similar, similar criminal appeal.
Right, oh, okay, so that's enough. So they all got it.
Yeah, obviously, it's like, because anyone can appeal anything.
I think those are already, uh.
No, no, they're already there. What I mean is, so if you do an appeal, you win your appeal, I think we should refund their, that fee.
And, and I agree with that, I mean, because you would've never had to file the appeal if the person who had your vehicle towed.
Sure.
Did the right thing the first, first time. So I mean, that becomes a.
Same thing with the, uh.
Well, let's stay on that one, though.
The civil and criminal.
Let's, let's stay with the.
The civil appeal, if I may just, uh, add, I just put a part cut a little bit, that is actually not a fee that we charge, um. This is for a civil infraction appeal. If somebody gets a speeding ticket, and the contested court. Judge, uh, decides or finds them that they did commit the offense, and they want to appeal it, then that file actually goes to superior court. That's where all the appeals happen, and that's where they have to pay that fee. So we have no control.
Okay.
With this civil fighting.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good explanation.
Yeah.
But for the tow hearing fee, anyone disagree with? Jordan here.
If it's wrong, then I think it should be.
Get it refunded.
Yeah.
Okay. We can do that. Yep. All right, but everyone's good with charging that fee, though?
Upfront, yeah. Cause if there's, and, and anyone who gets their.
Not only you get your tow fee back, the vehicle back, but you get the seventy-three dollars back.
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone who gets their car towed is gonna try to do the appeal to get it back.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean they were actually right.
And this is, doesn't happen that often anyways.
Right now.
Not a big impact. All right, any others? All right, we'll roll into forward with, with, minus the couple corrections that council had, um, issues with, and over there. Thank you, Cody. All right. Thank you for our minutes.
Mayor's report.
All right, the only thing that I, and I'm sorry, actually, if you want to go into, we were gonna, I'm not sure why I wasn't adding the agenda on this, it was just a mistake, talking about. Gotcha, my apologies, then. Um. Mayor's report, the only thing I wanted to remind folks on is the ranked release voting, um, kind of what the plan is for next week. And gee, uh, at the time, at five o'clock, there is what, five, I guess? Did that change? Yeah, so we have five applicants, uh, we actually set it up, correct? Two of them were outside the city limits, um, so we have five to, um, to discuss. Council does, um, per direction from council, the last meeting, uh, council will interview the applicants. We would suggest, um, just from kind of. Management perspective, I guess, but you should consider to, is having one applicant at a time in the room, so they're not hearing the, um, other answers. Kind of disadvantaged for, you know, the last person, or it's a, disadvantaged the first person versus the last person, they have time to, um, hear what they're saying, adjust and all that. Um, is everyone good with that?
No. Have, did you pick a, like an electronic form of doing this, or are we doing it manually?
Yeah, I'll get there, I'll get there.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, the next thing would be the interviewing of the candidates themselves. Um, we're hoping to get your questions of prior, um, if possible. If council's really against this, that's fine, we can, um, just go off the cuff, but we're suggesting that we have, um, questions that the council wants to ask everyone. You can, again, ask. But we're suggesting that we have, um, questions that council wants to ask everyone, you can, again, ask different questions, but, um, in order to. Um, make it as fair as we can for candidate to candidate, so they're, we're asking the same questions for each one, um, rather than random questions for just random, um, candidates.
Personally, for me, I, it's good, once I look at their app, I mean, it's gonna change what I wanna hear from that person. So I'm not, I'm, like in the past, a lot of times, everyone asks the same question, but doesn't always work.
How, how about this, how about if council would submit, um, questions that they wanna ask? And then we allow time to go off, um, some of those, like additional questions just off the cuff, would that?
When are we getting to see the applications?
We will, um, get there, but we'll, we'll send that back to them, yeah, but for that, just for that.
Is my understanding then that if he has three questions, he has two, he has five, she has six, I have five.
Recommend just have one each, one big question, then you can ask others additional after that.
But, okay, so then who's asking the questions then during the meeting?
You, the city count, it's up to you, you can each ask your own question, you can have me ask the questions, whatever you wanna do, up to you.
I'm just trying to figure out why we're having to submit up questions, who's doing the review of questions?
No, it's not even a review, it's just to have them all lined out, I'm not gonna alter your questions.
I prefer the way we've done it in the past, where we just go around, we ask, we each ask questions. Yeah, cause I may know one applicant, seen him around, know more about them than the other one, so I'm gonna ask them different questions, because I know candidate A. I don't know candidate B, so I don't, I ain't standing on this, I may ask, so it's nice to ask them differently.
That's right.
For others.
I know other people like the plan ahead, but literally, I'm not gonna know what I wanna ask this person until they sit there.
Council on board with that, then?
Yeah.
Okay, we will, um, not have prepared questions for the council or the applicants. Um, other than that, council will go into executive session, um, after all the applicants, um, have interviewed with their council. Is that still to, um, to discuss qualifications, is that still what the council wants to do?
Yeah, quick question.
Yep.
You mentioned only having one in there, are we gonna have the others outside, or just outside the door?
Yeah, just out in the lobby.
And they're still gonna be able to hear over us.
Technically, I mean, yeah, they could, they can also watch it, but, you know, we're just asking, you know, it just, in the moment in there, it's.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Um. Well, now let's go over the council, the ranked choice voting, um, how that would work out, you have a, um, cap, you put together these, uh, little. Ranked choice voting grids basically, that will have, um, for each, for each of the five different applicants. Um, each council member will be given a voting grid right here, and rank, rank applicants one through five, their first choice through their fifth choice. If there's a clear winner, um, or, so it'll take four votes, oh, excuse me, um, if there's a clear winner, yeah, with four votes, cause the council has, has six members in its, in its time. Um, the voting's over, that person wins, so the first, if, let's say, um, applicant A receives four votes the first round. That person is it. Uh, if there's not a clear winner, the bottom two applicants are eliminated, and there's a second round of voting, and we start that process all over again.
So we're not doing instant runoff?
Excuse me?
Instant runoff would be, this is the whole point of ranked choice, so. Candidate A, B, and C. A gets three votes, B got two, C got one, okay, as number, as the number one choice. Now whoever put, let's say whoever puts C as their number one, put A as their number two. Because C got the least amount of votes, that person's vote would then go to whoever their second choice is, which would go to A, which would then become who the winner is.
Yeah. We can do it that way?
It's, it's not ridiculous, the whole point.
That, that's the way ranked choice voting works.
I know, no, what I'm saying, the entire point of ranked choice voting is to find the person that is the most consensus agreement of every law. Now, does that mean a hundred percent of people are always gonna agree on who wins? No, but what it does is eliminates the, I have to vote for this guy or this guy. What it is, is you got A and B that are Republican Democrat, okay, everyone feels like I gotta vote for one of them. So screw everyone else that's running, what, rate, the whole point of ranked choice is, it allows you the opportunity to vote for someone that you might actually like better than these two people. But if they were to not win, you have your backup of how you feel you need to go.
I still see why they go into backup, into A position, when they were last, and now they go into A, is what you said.
No, that's not what I said, no, no, C, in that example, whoever was C that only got one vote as their number one choice. They, they're knocked out.
Okay.
Now, the person that put C as their number one. So if I put C as my number one, they got knocked out.
Yeah.
Now, whoever I put as my number two is now where my vote goes, and since I put A as my number two, my vote goes to A, now A has four votes and they won.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, does that give it a try?
That'd be the fair consensus of course, of course.
Yes, okay, we'll move on with that. Well.
And we're doing this in writing, Joe?
I'm not.
No, I mean.
Oh, yes.
So you're wanting to have, uh, present names?
And then, and then, and then they hand, they, I mean, who's that gets four?
Yes, and then half the underdogs, right?
Yeah, yeah, I got it, I'm happy with you, you know, yeah, well, um, but yeah, we'll be very, very for it after tonight. Um, tonight or tomorrow morning, Gads will send out the list of all the applicants, all their qualifications and all that stuff, um, or their applications.
Their files.
Yep, and, um, we'll be writing, along with that, probably not the same email, but I'll send out another email, recapping what we just talked about, um, in the process, again, just so you have it.
Okay.
On email, any questions?
And this is at the next meeting?
This is at the next meeting, right, this'll give you about basically a week to review and. Do what you want. Now, and you're more than welcome to contact these people outside one-on-ones and all that, um, just not done that in the past, but, yeah, it's up to you. Not to get it as well. Um, any other questions on that? All right, that was the biggest thing I had, um, one?
Um, initiatives, yeah, excuse me, initiatives. Karen?
Well, I thought you were just asking in general.
Well, we, we, I have an important initiative actually, and that is, um, Joe and I attended the last Creative District Task Force. And it's really important that we get more money, we get money to do this project, so. We, I'm requesting that we put this on the budget, and my understanding, it's very similar to our beautification project, the, the state will match funds. That we put into this project, and we're allowed, I think, initially seven thousand dollars just to begin the process, and then a forty thousand dollar grant. So what they're asking for upfront, a gathering, is ninety-four thousand, of which we get forty-seven thousand back.
That's a little bit steep then for this budget, obviously, the cycle that, um. Well, wow.
Is that right, gentlemen, wait?
I think that was the understanding is they, they would match, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I, I took the first one, and I don't think it's that much that, the upfront is at seven thousand, which we did budget for, we have, um, I think fourteen thousand seventy for Ertz. Yeah, but anyway, we do have, if we need to increase that a little bit to cover that initial, we will, um, the other part is the, um, the matching grant. And yeah, that we can use, um. I, I think that's better for our council amendment when we actually do it, uh, whenever, whatever project they, their execution signs they wanna do.
Well, I think we, all of this is based on city involvement, so I think we have to have this in place before we can actually, uh, call it.
The seventy thousand you, not the, it doesn't cost that much to do the whole process, um, to, to go through it, um.
Just need to get it out there before the time passes, but, yeah.
Totally.
With this, if it's ninety, ninety-six thousand dollars or fourteen thousand, that's a good chunk of money, and all I'm hearing is project. There's no, are there any minutes, is there anything that we can get an idea of briefing of what went on during that meeting? For those who could not attend because of either work or some other outside thing, because there's also a whole community of members that. You know, our community members are gonna also kind of wanna know what's going on, particularly if you start.
Well, we wish they would really come to the meetings, cause everybody is invited, the state has an application process of papers that's this thick, it's a huge process. That we're working through, the first thing we did last meeting was we have to, uh, physically create the district where the creative arts district will be. So we worked out on that diligently last meeting, and then it goes from there.
And so what I think, uh, Councilman Press is saying, cause I, I, I kind of see where he's going, is in order to have money budgeted. In the first place, we have to have some kind of vision and communication, or support the community, get behind the meetings, or anything, and I, and I think.
Actually, our communication director was there, so I'll help her prepare the report.
No, I, I, I'm not trying to be rude.
No, 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 I understand what you mean, this is all new, so again.
We're just trying to get down there.
The process goes.
But then.
But yeah, we need to request the money.
Fair response.
Fair response, uh, fair, uh, this is an appropriate place to ask about it, so we'll.
Anything else?
Uh, I have one other question, there seemed to be a lot of talk, and I know this is not our jurisdiction, but people all over are asking about this new proposed airport change.
Yeah.
Location, uh, I know it's not for us to do, but is there any, do we have any plans, that's right in our backyard somewhere?
So, the county asked for, um, all jurisdictions to, uh, sign onto a letter asking not to be considered for it. Due to the traffic and, traffic and infrastructure, um, impacts, I'm deciding yet if it's gonna, gonna sign onto it, um.
I don't think we should.
Just from my perspective as mayor.
Can't even handle our own traffic.
Um, just as my perspective as mayor to sign on or not, which I have that authority to do, um. I lean towards signing on, so asking that, them not to join in with all the other jurisdictions.
There's.
Against it.
I, I understand, like, that it's totally your decision. Uh, I think what a lot of people are not considering is. Did they want it? No. But the fact of the matter is, this area needs another airport, as far as West Washington. And the fact of the matter is, this area is the only place that actually makes any sense. Now, is that Lewis County, Thurston, some, I don't know, but this south end is the only place that actually makes any sense for it. You already have one in Belliham, you have one in Everett, you have one in Seattle, you have one in Tacoma. It doesn't make any sense to put another international airport in Auburn, only fifteen, twenty minutes away. The whole point is to have one between Portland and Seattle, which this, that's where this is. It can, it will totally eliminate, if you're flying, having to drive from here to Seattle. And whether you like it or not. West Washington is not where, it's not gonna be what we all know it as anymore.
So are you advocating for it?
Yeah.
My view on it is, and it's following what the discussion's been going on, yes, I know that there's a lot of. It takes away, a lot of people are concerned about, you know, what a Roman space, we want this, all these other things. But at the same time, as Councilman Bullock put it. This is one, this is a plan twenty to thirty years out, in other words, they're in the process of just trying to find. Where are we gonna put it, so that we can start doing planning for the development, the roads will get planned, things will get planned. What I've asked for, and following what our legislature representatives have been talking about. One, uh, Legislature Representative Barkus is on transportation committees, or he's gonna be very much involved with looking at this, and, uh. Representative Wilcox, uh, but he's, he knows of the two in Pierce and one in Thurston. And right now, that's what, according to the requirements, that's what they've come up with. And yes, we can ask for it to go back, but what I've been advocating for is we need to make sure that there is an actual open, honest, and transparent conversation. That we hear not just from business owners, corporations, and people who. In a closed door, that we need to get the community talking, because what, uh, what could be is advocating. That it just be a regional airport, in other words, it's not the big seven forty-seven, seven, uh, seven, seven, sevens or anything else like that, leave the international for C T A. Have a regional one here that will allow you to get to the, um, in trucking terms, the western eleven states. In other words, it's the up-down, and it's a small aircraft, it could be puddle hoppers, whatever it may be, and that will allow. That will help alleviate C T A, cause they can't grow anymore, but now, because you take some of those regional flights out of C T A and put them in, um. Payne, which is north, and then down here, they can now start taking in more international flights. And again, this is twenty, thirty years down the line before they even break ground. And so that's the, that's the discussion, and so there's gonna be a lot of planning, a lot of development with it. If we close our minds off right now and say, nope, and do a big fight for it. We don't know what opportunities, what could've happened, or we may do the big fight. And then because we dig our heels in so far, we aren't even at the table to be part of the discussion when they say, hey, it's gonna happen.
Another thing.
No, as I said, you, you said you have that right to say, the city, I as mayor of the city.
That's what I was gonna say, I was gonna say, but a jurisdictionalize, we're not gonna have to deal with this, we're gonna all have a seat at the table, if it's in Thurston County, absolutely, we have a seat.
Right.
But we're gonna do it without, um, without consulting us, without working for infrastructure increases, improvements, and all that stuff.
As I said, I know you, you can do what you want, but I'm putting my view out there, uh, we need to have this open discussion and understanding, this isn't a five-year, hey, it's built and boom, we've got. Everything going on, this is building like twenty, thirty years.
It's not gonna be, that was never a discussion, it was never discussed, you, international airport, it was a regional, sort of, yeah, yeah.
No.
I just don't want people thinking it.
No, no, I know it wasn't internationally, it's.
In my opinion, by the mayors of Thurston, getting together and saying, we don't want this, don't include this, please don't. You're doing a negative thing. If you ever phone this, if you ever phone into L A area, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
So L A X, total chaos.
Oh, no.
Flying to John Wayne.
It takes me about ten minutes to go through security in L A X.
Getting in and out of there, I'm not talking about security, I'm talking about the area.
Oh, yeah.
That's crazy.
Oh, the traffic.
You fly into John Wayne, you're in and out of there, and John Wayne's right in the middle of neighborhoods. Granted, this is not Southern California, but they've got a regional airport, and we got Southwest, uh. Alaska, all those smaller carriers, flying in and out of there all day. Now, the people that live directly around it, you have the noise issues, but. My grandmother lives down there, it's a fifteen, twenty-minute drive to John Wayne Airport, never hear a plane once on a matter of us.
Yeah, so from my perspective, I think we're in the middle of both Pierce County and the Thurston County options, it's gonna impact us either way. Um, I, I do believe it's gonna be less of an impact with Pierce County, especially if they go with the northern choice. And it's still fairly close, a lot closer, um, than C T A for our residents here, um. So, anyway, I'm just considering it, that, this wasn't even my question.
It's a two-runway era.
But it's not, it's, they're supposed to deliver their, um, recommendation to the legislature, um, next year, um, so it's.
It's gonna be a place for smaller carriers.
I'm going to come there.
Do you have anything else, Karen?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm spirited, I'm.
Yeah, um, so with all of this COVID nonsense, from the governor finally being completely gone in about less than a month. Um, I think we need to do away with all this Zoom crap and stop spending the money on.
What do you mean?
Stop spending the money on Zoom meetings, people need to come back, be a person again.
What in, what video Zoom meetings are you referring to?
All of it.
What, give me one. What, what Zoom meetings are you like right now?
We're spending money on Zoom meetings right now at this council meeting, we're spending Zoom, spending money on. In the court, Zoom, it's not free, I know it's not free at a, in, at this level. Zoom's only free for a single individual, and you're popping on with a couple of your friends, uh, I know it's not cheap. I don't know the exact price, but I know we're spending money on it, and. If COVID did one thing, it spread a whole lot of money to tech companies, and me personally, I'm done with it, and I think we should be done with it.
So.
Well, can I turn in here?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I, I did wanna talk about, sorry, about the whole way we're doing these study sessions, to me, when we initially talked about. Moving the study sessions to a new place, being more casual. People talking freely, to me, this is me, I feel like this is just another council meeting that we're. People talking freely, to me, this is me, I feel like this is just another council meeting that we're not making decisions. Where it's very, uh, not only is it being filmed, but we're, and I'm, I love our American flag, but we're doing, we're making it so formal, but to me, it doesn't feel like a study session. So, I looked into the open public meeting app, and everything that I read, uh, definitely it has to be posted, definitely people can come. But I don't understand why we're still, like, like Jane said, filming and having it out there. It just, to me, this doesn't feel any different than a meeting, than a council meeting.
In reference to the filming, I think we should continue doing it.
I have a problem, so.
We, we should still also continue doing the Zoom option.
Why?
Why? I'm a truck driver. If I all of a sudden have to do over the road for three weeks at a time, I'm gonna be having to constantly write in going, I need to be excused, I need to be excused. But yet I can stop, and I can zoom in, and I can be part of the meeting.
Previously, we did that, you just called in. We did that before COVID.
And why not do, why not use the Zoom? So that I can see.
Because making a phone call is free. Zoom, I don't know exactly how much we're paying, but.
I, I think if we were making a decision on that, we should find what the cost is, because it's.
I've asked plenty of times, no one wants to give me an answer.
So, do you know, you had to.
No, I was just gonna, if, if I may, just, uh, uh, from a course perspective, I can't speak for everybody else, but from a course perspective, I don't know the cross theater. But I do know that we have more people appearing with, uh, doing, uh, Zoom. Because it, it's access to justice as well. That's the way we're seeing it. Sometimes we have somebody that's out of town, out of state, um, employment or whatnot, and they're able to appear to report via Zoom. So, I will push for that, and I will fight for continuing. Plus, that's really in the era we're moving in reality, I mean, people can now carry a report via their phone, so. I, access to justice.
I'm all for Zoom for the council meetings. I don't necessarily see a problem that I am a member of your government though. I'm talking strictly about the study sessions. To me, they feel like they've just marched into this.
I don't think we need to put our hands in this meeting.
I agree.
Okay.
But I don't even know, it still feels so formal. It's kind of like when we, when we went to the retreat, it was posted, it was public. Nobody showed up, that's their prerogative. But I feel like in a, it, I feel like we've created this atmosphere where it's not total freedom like it used to be. We're not trying to hide anything, it's not that at all, it's just.
What does it used to be?
Um, I know that I used to come to these, and it was more just kind of a roundtable, it felt more like a roundtable discussion. What I think of a roundtable discussion, I just mean you're not staring at yourself, you're just kind of talking about things. It's not super formal, you're not necessarily taking role. Um, you do take, I was reading through all this, you have to have minutes, you have to have notes, take them and get out. It's just, it's how I feel, and I have, whether they speak up or not, I have had council members ask me about this as well. But I just.
What would it look like then?
What it would look like to me is we, we could meet here, or we could meet someplace else, but we don't have that. Um, I, everything I read in here says that you're encouraged to make the audio video. Everything says you're encouraged to, it doesn't say you have to. I just.
When you say this, what do you mean?
Okay, so we're steering them ourselves. Um, I, I guess I envision more of, of.
Like a board table?
Like a board table, and you're, you're sitting there and you're, you know, you have your presentations, you have the things you wanted to discuss, and we talk. More in a casual environment, not, not having role, maybe not.
We can push the tables and I want us to go to the James.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, I don't know, I just, that's, that's how I would be.
I like that more.
More than that.
Other y'all's, Joseph, or Elton Richardson?
Yeah.
I think a lot we get done in the study session is really being able to share opinions and have freedom to really express things. I know James wants to express things, but then we have to be careful how we behave and watch our language, which I understand at some point, but I think study sessions, which could be transparent in any way as well, but. We really need to get down to the nitty-gritty and have some conversation, and, uh.
And we can.
Yeah.
We can. Just because it's recorded doesn't mean that, well, okay, it, what do you envision the notes being? Well, we talked about for tonight, uh, we had a review of the pre-resolution given by Director Cole. There's your minute on the word. Wha- what was discussed? Well, we discussed, we reviewed the pre-resolution. That is literally taking the minutes. By having this here, if I all of a sudden go, oh man, we had a really good discussion, there was some give and take on some things. Let me go back and review so that I can see what was said, so that next week when I come forward, or two weeks from now, when the resolution's brought up, I'd say, hey. We've discussed this portion of it, why, why is it not changed?
If, if I recall, and I'm thinking back years ago, before COVID, I do, something's telling me that they were audio recorded. I don't know if anybody remembers.
So I was on council right, right when we changed, I was council member that did the change, um, from what you're suggesting to where we're at. Prior to what, um, I, I didn't do it a lot, obviously, council. But, um, um, we did record it, audio, um, I don't believe we video recorded it at that time. Um, but that was the big push that I want, not for myself, not for, to get better, um, conversation, or less conversations. But from my perspective, everything we do here is people's business, uh, whether it's what we're talking about in private, I mean, when in private. Um, if we're talking about city business, it's public's information, and it just puts a barrier for someone to have to ask for the audio. Cause back then, it was, you had to request it, it wasn't necessarily, um, uh, been available like it is on YouTube, where you can watch it like right now. So, for me, anything that adds to the, to make it harder for a random resident to watch what's going on in their government. I'm gonna be opposed to personally. I, I, I'm part of increased transparency, and I really do think you would need taking a step back. We're doing the public's business here. It's, they have every right to attend, and I, I get it, the reason why there was no one, and that's kind of why we did it, and it was your source. Was to kind of discourage people from attending, but if someone, I guarantee you, if someone random citizen wanted to show up, that would change the dynamic a hundred percent.
And what I was gonna ask is, where are the minutes from that? Because we have to have minutes. I would love to.
Oh, no, no, we don't have to. I don't, we have to have hours, and that's. We have to host the meetings. Not every meeting requires, a city council meeting, a study session has to require study minutes.
But yeah, we, if we ran, we ran a study session like we did with our retreat, I would love to see what the minutes would say. I would love to see what the minutes would say, because I can be.
I wouldn't go back to any different, if anyone showed up, I'll just be clear right there.
Sure, you might not, but there's other council members that may not.
But, you know, that's, that's. I, I just think that, I mean, we're doing well. If you want to make this more relaxed, phones down, stop. The only thing that needs to be done is, hey, who's here? Following people are here. All right, let's start talking. And if we talk over each other, we talk over each other, and if it gets to the point where it comes out of control, like kids yelling and screaming at the dinner table. Mom takes over and starts calling names.
Yeah.
We still record it.
I don't care about the being.
And I still believe that we need to keep the Zoom going, and we actually need to start encouraging all the other functions of government that are public meetings. We need to get them recorded, and on Zoom, so that, as was stated, the, you were talking about public funds. The, uh, the Arts Commission, we're still trying to get our creative districts. Uh, they came forward and said, hey, we need ninety-six thousand dollars. Whoa, what, what are you talking about now? You thought what happens with the three pictures that were proposed? Imagine coming to the council.
That was peanuts compared to that.
Imagine coming to the council and saying, hey, we want ninety-six thousand dollars.
That's still mental.
Just for the rest of, one percent time, please.
But you know that.
No, no, we're having a conversation.
We're having a conversation, actually. Yeah, well, you guys are talking over each other, don't get here what's going on, what are you saying?
They can.
This is all I'm saying, like, I think saying this, you weren't what.
But as I said.
It's hard even here, I mean, it's one thing.
But, uh, you know, back to Councilmember Blair, who says we need to get rid of Zoom, no. I think it's great, because not only is Zoom wonder, allows me to still, as a council member, when I have to be on the road, to communicate and see what's going on. But every resident of the town, if they are making dinner for their three kids, cause they just came home from soccer practice, and who knows, whatever.
But they're.
At six o'clock, is available to them. And what we need to do is, we need to make sure that it's still available, because if we don't. It just reinforces to those that say, why bother? Council members don't wanna listen to us, the mayor doesn't wanna listen to us, why bother going and talking to them? Cause they're gonna just make up their own minds on what they wanna do based upon the people that support them.
I'm not, I don't care about the cameras, I don't care about it being posted online for people to watch here, I don't care about any of that. What I'm saying is, stop spending money on Zoom, handing it over to two frigging tech companies. That's what I'm saying, that's all I'm saying. What's the alternative? Record it, post it on where we were posting it, but stop paying for Zoom.
Then what I'd like to ask, what I'd like to ask is, Mayor Pinto, can we please buy the second council meeting? Get a cost estimate of what it truly costs, what comes out of the general fund to pay for us to run a Zoom meeting?
Roll fast, Jason, you seem to have some members on Zoom.
Yeah, they're not gonna be exact, but we pay roughly seven hundred and fifty dollars per year for the license that runs this webinar. And it's not just this meeting that's running that webinar, it's other meetings throughout the city. Uh, and so it's pretty inexpensive for what we offer the public.
On Zoom?
Yes.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars for a public to be able to communicate to their council members, be part of a planning commission meeting, be part of a art commission meeting.
That can't be correct.
That's what it is.
Just setting up to have ten people on Zoom, it was like a thousand dollars a month.
If that is the cost, are you? If it is the cost. But if that is the cost, council member, are you okay with that?
If it's seven hundred and fifty for the year, sure, but I don't think that's what it actually is.
As I asked, on the second meeting of this month, can we please have an actual cost estimate of what the cost is to run a Zoom meeting, not just for the city council, but for the whole city?
No, you can't, you know what it is.
I asked for less, I asked.
So you said buy, so that.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, cause then, cause we need to really start encouraging other commissions that need to also go to the Zoom meeting. For people who may not be able to attend at ten o'clock in the morning, at one o'clock in the afternoon. People work, I don't know about you guys, but there are people who work who might want to all of a sudden speak before the planning commission. Their meeting is at eight o'clock, ten o'clock.
I think what Holly's asking is if we can just be a little more less communal and more.
Yeah, we're, we're asking to give her.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's, let's get on James', um, issue with the Zoom real fast, and let's kind of solidify that, and then we'll move to.
Yeah.
I, I just feel that there's, there's more value in being in person, period. With these meetings, thankfully, we have enough, we're all comfortable coming in and being here. A lot of other cities, cities are still not doing that, for whatever reason. And that's, that's their own thing, but for me personally, there's an element of being, sitting in here in person and yelling at each other, that you're not gonna get a screen.
And I understand.
How many meetings has there been when there's been more than two people absent on council, though?
What?
And I'm just saying, most of these meetings, since I became mayor on, you know, January one, we have been in person. The Zoom capabilities is still there for people that, you know, i- if it was COVID-related, they can still participate that way. If it's non-COVID-related, like what Councilor Hess was talking about, they can participate this way. This doesn't take away by having it. In my, and it doesn't take away from what we're doing here, cause everyone's in person here. And that's what my administration has done, has gotten us back in person.
Yeah.
You know, and so.
Thank you for that.
Yes, yeah, like, it was what council wanted to, and the D one, but regardless of that, we are back in person. This adds an additional level for people to participate in it, but not necessarily be able to.
If it's truly only seven hundred and fifty dollars a year that the city's spending for the license to use Zoom. Cool, I will shut up. But I really don't.
But if it's not.
But if it's not, I don't think it is, because I've looked into it to s- to s- set up a license account. Where it was like fifteen users, and it was not seven hundred and fifty bucks a year.
I, I think that number sounds about right, but we will get a, um, an actual, or not estimate, an actual figure, um, from PR department from, um, Jason, the IT department. We will, we'll figure out how much we're paying for it, and we'll let council know. Fair? Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
I wanna say my opinion. I like Zoom, um, for the simple fact, there's no excuse for citizens. You have a meeting publicly, you can be here. If you can't be here, you can tune in. If you don't do any of those, you still complain, you're without excuse. Because every option's available for you to participate in your government. And so, the only thing I would say, yeah, these, the state session can need to be more relaxed, you know, we don't need no name tags, we know each other, um, for instance. I don't know how it's gonna be more relaxing.
Yeah.
Maybe some snacks, who knows, you know, some decorations. Um, I think the Zoom's good, uh, for that reason, cause there's people like, like Stephanie in Tuneson every week. If she can't be, cause she runs a business, she has a family, you know, but she wants to be involved, and I'll also know what's going on. This is happening, that she can build up. Participate, which can be there in other people as well, so I think that's good, and hopefully, when that's implemented, we make sure.
Look at state-level government, Canada.
This is a state.
I'm just saying, look how, look, these types of meetings and stuff, it's not. They're yelling at each other.
They're starting to back to the roots, too. Transportation, that, for, for transportation.
No, 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 I mean, like, if, watch, uh, like the UK legislature, or, or Canada, or Parliament, or whatever. I'm ju- no, no, I'm taking the example, it's more like, they're yelling at each other and working stuff out, and, and figuring it out, you know what I mean?
And as I said, we can go with that. I like what Holly wants, what, uh, Councilmember Smith.
Good transition to the next topic.
Yes, okay.
Oh, but may I just ask, do we have to say council first, you know?
Yeah, okay, that's formal, that's.
Hi, hi, it's good to see.
My suggestion is that we get rid of the name tags.
Yeah, okay, on with the, called by your first name.
Yeah, and just.
If you want.
If you want.
Unless it gets out, I mean, you know, have somebody, unless it gets out.
You can call him in, I don't care, only whatever, it's not the.
But as I was gonna say, what, what she would like to do, I think is very reasonable. And I think one of the ways to go about doing it is, to make it informal, is, she says, start the meeting, and, and a roll call at bare minimum.
Why, why can't you do a roll call?
So you know who's here, so it's gonna be.
We can see who's here, we can see, that's why.
But it, it's for, it's for the public, it's for that portion there, so they are, they know that it's.
They would, they would see.
But again, then, then it, I don't.
Okay, well, I say it's actually required for council members to be. Yeah.
Um.
Because if it's required, I think you would have to make them take a role.
You have to have a role, you have to have a role, so you should.
And for it, that, they were there.
It's a public meeting, but I don't know, it's similar, it's actually a city.
Yes and no. It's not like with a city council meeting, if we don't have X number of people, we can't have a meeting. Yeah, I think study session, you could, we could do it without, you could do it without, yeah.
I was gonna say, we can do the study session, and as I said, it's like the dinner table, if you wanna think of it that way, to where all of a sudden, all the kids are yelling and screaming, talking over each other, nobody can hear what's going on. She runs the meeting, she says, everybody shut up, and calls upon the person. If she doesn't wanna do that, she just wants to allow everybody to clear the young stranger. And that's what we're doing this.
Right, no, I think that people should just be able to.
She's very thoughtful.
No, I don't have to be, but I kept getting the, you know, no disrespect, but.
After these guys. After you guys do your initiatives, I have another question.
Okay, so, what do we, I mean, I know we don't make decisions here, but what about no name tag?
Sorry, so what, what do you, what would your, no name tags are for?
I guess, like, no name tags. No name tags, mayor, can I have this? We just still offer Zoom to the public, but we can turn that screen off.
Well, that I have.
I mean, we don't have to have the projector.
Yeah, we are just staring at the whole.
We can turn that off, that is more comfortable. We can still have it on Zoom and off, unless there's a presentation that we're sharing, I can still share my screen with the public, or unless you need to see a presentation. But we can turn the projector off, still have Zoom, and then maybe we can scoop the cables closer together next time. Um, we'll still have to have spit, well, send, so, cause we can get the Zoom, but we can scoop this cable, so do a little bit closer setup, get rid of the name tags, and turn the screen off, I mean, that would be. I'm gonna go.
So you said you're getting in here.
Take it across.
No, but what do you guys think?
No, no.
Yeah.
What about, okay, what about the, and I think, I think this is on the, on the flag, but what about the on the flag?
You know. I don't think.
I don't know, because to me, it just makes it sense this more formal, okay?
So, no name tags, no flag allegiance. So no name tags, no budget rejects.
No, easily.
Is that right, Senator?
Just.
Turn off the TV.
Yeah, we're not, you guys are seeing.
Being a casey mayor, some.
Yeah.
And you just sit back and look pretty.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I would like to see, but I'd love to hear the, um, comfortable about.
I'd like to open up a prayer.
I would actually. I would want, yeah, it's a little. It's literally your meeting.
I think it's, yeah.
I obviously want the input.
I think we'll keep it on as we go and make adjustments and, uh, we just need to make sure that study sessions go over two hours and we'll be good.
Yeah.
Nailed it.
But I feel like I'm learning a lot, so I'm not grabbing about the time.
And so when I'm here for the council, from now on, we won't have name tags, we'll turn the screen off. Um, we're still recording video and audio. Um, we're not calling each other by council members unless they want to be called by that.
No more nudging, Holly.
No. I have herling nudges. I have herling nudge.
Joe's gonna hear it, chair of the court.
I'll say it all quite young a little bit. But those are the big things, right?
Like you said, that's a culture thing. You know, the administrator was talking about changing the culture in in the city hall, which you have. I think we're trying to change the culture here in the city council. So I think that's where this is coming across is you've done a great job on the culture change. Do you want to continue that culture change here? Be less pro, be more real, be more authentic. But we want to be pro, we have our city council meetings will be pro, we'll be fine, genuinely.
What I would like to ask is that other staff presentations by somebody like the Colts, the administrator, the council. The chief. And we at least give them like respect.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we don't talk over them, we give them the court of law. Well, I'm I'm just trying to make sure that that is understood thing that they still get that respect because we are. They they got off at five o'clock.
They hit it even.
They're like, with if they're up, if someone's up here presenting, that's, I'll put my hand up and wait for them to.
As I said, I just want to make sure that, you know. When it's, when we're having our own discussions, it's not a problem. We have, we need to make sure we give the staff their respect that they deserve. Put my hand down. Just before we leave, can somebody please give me?
We still have to recommunication people, so.
Okay, just go through the.
Just get it out.
No, what I.
Somebody tell me exactly what I need to do for this budget thing. What do I, what am I required? Do you want to report? You want a thing at the next meeting? What do, how do I do that?
So. I mean, it it's too late right now for additional requests. It's if there is, if it's a larger class like that, I mean, the budget's been pretty all developed.
It seems like some responsibility of the arts class.
We can, um, add that for sure. We've already gone for the seven thousand or so. Um, we've already budgeted for more than that in the next, in the, in this budget. But get an actual number for us.
That is the number. Forty thousand plus the seven.
I I I don't think it is.
Yes, it is, Joe.
That's the forty thousand, yeah.
That's the, the grant is coming to forty thousand, but we have to put in forty thousand. We have to put in double that to get half back.
Wait, what is the grant for?
Oh, to create the creative district, to get the forty thousand dollars from the federal government to put toward the district for funding.
For a project, not necessarily, not for the actual district. I was there at the first meeting. That wasn't my understanding. Joseph, correct me.
It's it's to get things for the for the creative district established, I believe, and isn't that what it is?
Yes.
I I don't believe that's what it is.
It's it's to, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
The seven thousand is for the creation of it.
Right.
Right? That is, but the forty thousand, they say up to forty thousand in matching money. So if we want to do a project with the windmills or the whatever it is, if it costs thirty thousand dollars, let's say. If the city puts in fifteen thousand dollars, the, um, the government, the state would put in fifteen thousand in matching. If a project costs, let's say eighty thousand dollars and the city says, we we want that, we'll put up to forty thousand dollars and the state would match that to the eighty thousand.
So it's about a matching thing, but what I need to reemphasize is money, they're not, I I really don't see people supporting anything if they don't know with a clear vision. And I'm.
Right, but so who's responsible for, you know, I get it. What I, what if you, if you'd like to know, what I would like to see is, you said, we drew the, we drew the district. Where's the district? What are the streets? What does it include? What is identified that we can bring in? What is the vision? What do you see being the, um, theme or, you know, those various things? Because right now, again. So a- after every task force meeting, I just come in and give a report of what we're doing, that type of thing.
Basically, um, yeah. And we we should also be giving notes from the, um, the chair as well, yeah. So we'll get more.
I just want to do the right thing, you see?
Yeah, no, I understand. It will. I'm committed to making that happen as well. I think it's a valuable for our community, um, but again, I. That forty thousand, I, I'm a hundred percent, it's not for.
Dr. George, that was my understanding.
The the seven thousand for.
We were really clear, you know, we'll be.
So what what it sounds like is that seven grand is what establishes the art, the creative arts district. And then you were talking about the matching grant. What from? First, like they've already got to seven thousand for us to do all the applications and create the creative arts district, whatever it is. Moving forward, now the arts commission needs to think of projects. Specific projects, figure out what it's gonna cost with whatever es- estimates or whatever they've got. And that's when they then come to us. With whatever the project is they want to do. And then with that project, if we approve it, then we apply for the matching grant.
I'm not sure, but I'll find out. It sounded like there was a forty thousand dollar grant available that we would get to move for a project.
Exactly, just.
We have to have a project first.
To ask for money without having someone to present what it is, and that's why we need to slow down at the creative task force. And the arts commission needs to slow down and have a conversation rather than just expecting money. I'm just expressing things, maybe I should have set up a creative task force meeting because everybody wants to move so doggone fast. But they don't have any vision on what they want to produce.
The first step is just getting the district.
Yeah.
There is no, there will be no support if there is not a good vision that identifies our community as well.
Well, this is what we have to do is go out into the community and if there's anybody listening, we need people, um. To come and identify who we are, what makes us unique and all that stuff that has to do with being approved by the state. And we need more volunteers.
I understand.
Anything else, additions?
So, probably that sucks.
Really enjoyed the meeting, guys. Thank you, uh, no initiatives here.
I belong in this group in life, but I don't know.
Last time I turned. Just walk out.
Thank you for the name tag, Kathy, I appreciate it.